All right. Good evening, everyone. We are resuming the special town meeting of February 4th, 2021. It is now February 8th. This is the second session of the special town meeting. We went through Articles 1 to 10. The other night, we now pick up with Article 11. But before we start, I do want to declare that quorum has been met. And I'll ask everyone to please join in a moment of reflection as we prepare to do our work and to think about our duty and our commitment to act in the best interests of our community, to listen to the competing arguments on the various matters that we're going to discuss, and to show respect to all, regardless of how we may feel, either in support or in opposition to their positions. So if we could have just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I want to make note of a couple of retirements of longtime employees who held senior positions in the town. Charlotte Cannelli, who has been the director of the library for a number of years, 10 or 12 years, I think it was. I could be wrong, but has recently retired. And we want to thank her for her work. Her successor Clayton Cheever will be starting at the library very soon, I'm told. And in the electric light department, Jim Collins, who worked for the department, I think, from his days as a co-op student at Northeastern until his retirement a few weeks ago, has retired as the superintendent of the light department. And he's been succeeded by Kevin Shaughnessy, who has been with the department for a number of years. So we thank Jim and Charlotte for their service over these years. And we wish Kevin and Clayton good luck and much success in their new positions. You've been reminded, I think, about raising hands and so forth. Again, if you want to speak, raise your hand. Q and A is to be used only by people making a second on a motion that has been made or to raise a point of order. It's not to ask questions, even though it's called Q and A. And we will be doing hand raising for some of the votes tonight. We'll be doing polls for others of the votes tonight. Particularly the land use articles we expect will be doing polls for those. I, as announced the other night, will be recusing myself from Articles 12, 13, 14, and 15. The body voted on Thursday night to have Mike Riley act as temporary moderator, and he will step in when we come to Article 12. I want to make a very brief comment about the procedure the other night. I thought it went pretty well. There were no major disasters. Always something to wish for when we're doing something new. We received some comments, helpful criticism, as well as some congratulations from people after the meeting on Thursday night. And one thing that I will tell you that I would not do again is, and I did it for all good reasons, but I think it was cumbersome in the end. We had all kinds of hands raised when Ms. Homewood made her motion to divide the question. And then I saved all the names and kept going through those folks. If we come to such a situation as that again tonight, I'm not going to do that. I think if we have an amendment or something like that, we're just going to lower hands and have people raise their hands if they want to speak to the particular matter again. So I thought what I was doing made sense at the time, but I was thinking about it about an hour after the meeting, and it made it a little cumbersome. So we're not trying to keep people from speaking, but we need to keep the meeting moving along. And so if that happens, that's how we're going to proceed tonight. All right, we're ready to go. Article 11 is the first of the articles we're taking up tonight. Article 11 involves a proposal to move from a paper zoning map to a digitized official zoning map. And this is under the zoning act and affects our zoning bylaw. So we will have, I believe, a report from the planning board. And then I understand the motion will be made, and then we will have a presentation by Mr. Halkeodis. And if I stated the order incorrectly, somebody will correct me by speaking up. So who's presenting for the planning board first?
Mr. Moderator, this is Alfred Porro. Good evening. I am presenting on behalf of the town, to the town on behalf of the planning board.
All right, this is Alfred Porro, Jr., who is the chairman of the planning board. Mr. Porro, you may proceed with respect to Article 11.
Thank you. The planning board held public hearings for six zoning bylaw amendments. Public hearings were held virtually over the internet using GoToMeeting software. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, accommodations were made to allow the meeting attendees to ask questions and make comments utilizing the chat feature of the software. The following is the planning board's report on the six public hearings. Article 11, adoption of a new official zoning map. Planning board held a public hearing on January 25th, 2021 to accept public comments on the article to adopt a new official zoning map. No members of the public attended the virtual public hearings. A planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the article at town meeting. The town vote to adopt the new official zoning map dated February 4, 2021, as set forth in the warrant that was offered up by town meeting member Ernest Pachakowski, who is also a planning board member, as well as Mr. Joseph Sheehan, who is a member of the town meeting group as well as a member of the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Porro. All right, so we have a motion to adopt the new zoning map. And Mr. Porro has read the motion. I have a copy of it, signed by Mr. Pachakowski and Mr. Sheehan. Is this where Mr. Halkeodis is going to take over?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
All right, good evening. This is the town planner, Paul Halkeodis.
Good evening. Tonight, we have six zoning amendments that we're going to be discussing. Some of them are a little complicated. And so I'm going to do my best to break down the information so that everyone can understand. And once I'm through, we'll be glad to answer any questions or take any comments. Article 11 is the adoption of a new next-generation zoning map. The planning department has been working with the engineering department and a consulting firm, CAI Technologies, for the last couple of years on updating our zoning map. This is a next-generation digital computer-based map. As you'll see, it's color. And the base of the map is the property boundaries in the town, the lots. This is our existing zoning map. It's a black and white map, and it doesn't show the property boundaries, which makes it difficult to determine what zoning district a particular property is located in. Takes a little bit of time to zoom in on this map and understand where a property is. With this new map, it makes it much easier and faster. That map, the current map, is a pen and ink. It's black and white. It's difficult to read and interpret, and it doesn't show those property lines. Over the last 10 or 15 years, most communities have updated their zoning map.
Paul, I have to interrupt for a moment. We're not seeing anything. Are you showing the map yet?
Yep, let me back up and try to try that again.
Paul, let me just, I didn't realize that you were at an accompanying presentation at this moment. So I'm going to stop my share. And you should be able to, if I will, you should be able to share now. Do you see the green share button on the bottom of your screen?
I do.
Great.
Let me find that. Hold on.
I'm sure glad you guys know what you're doing, because I have no idea what you're doing.
Can you see my presentation now?
No.
No, we cannot.
All right, let's try that again. Show screen. It's Article 11, which is down here. And this is the. Yep.
Yeah, so do you show all windows?
Show all windows. Hold on, we're getting there. There it is. Got it?
Fabulous.
Thank you.
We got it.
Thank you. I'm glad to have been of assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize for that. Let's start over again. As I said, this is a new map that was developed with CAI Technologies. It is a next-generation computer-based map. It's color, and it uses the town's property boundaries as the base layer for the map. This is the current zoning map. It's a pen and ink drawing, black and white. It's difficult to interpret, and it doesn't show the property lines, which are important to understand what zoning district any given property is located in. Over the last 10 or 15 years, most communities have updated their zoning maps. Now it's Norwood's turn. The map will be part of the town's geographic information system, and that will enable us to connect data with the map itself. Having a digital layer of our zoning boundaries will allow users of the town's online mapping service to superimpose additional data layers over the zoning map to look at things like whether or not a property is included in the FEMA flood zone. Different layers of information, like buildings, can be turned on and off. And things, environmental things like wetlands and waterways will be able to be turned on and off, superimposed over the zoning map. Here, we can see the new map and its color. It looks a little better, and I can tell you it's a lot easier to interpret. This will be a valuable tool for those of us that use the zoning map fairly frequently, appraisers, engineers, surveyors, town residents, and town employees. It's important to note that the vote for Article 11 is a vote to simply adopt the new map, which doesn't change any of our existing zoning districts. Later on this evening, there will be a couple of articles that will propose to change zoning districts. But this map makes no changes to the existing zoning districts. It's just the approval of a new map that will convert us from a pen and ink, old-fashioned drawing map to a digital computer-based format. The planning board and the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of this article. And I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Halkeodis. Christian, will I see? Now I see. Okay. So if anybody wants to raise a hand, we'll see that on the side. If there's anybody who wants to discuss this. I see Mrs. Haley.
Anne Haley, District 4. See, I can remember sometimes. I just want to understand who actually owns the control over this. And I know there was a little discussion earlier in one of your meetings about the engineering department having some abilities. Is this a separate map from what engineering uses? And who will make changes on this? If so, who makes the changes on this map?
Mr. Halkeodis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That's a good question. The engineering department will be in charge of maintaining and updating this map. So it won't be myself or anyone in the planning department. They will be the custodians of any future map changes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the work that's gone into this. This is, we need to move on and join at least the 19th century and get a good map for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Haley. I have Mr. Bowers next.
James Bowers, District 7. So I understand that the expense of creating this new map has already been incurred, and we're just adopting something that's already complete and created, et cetera.
Is that right? Mr. Halkeodis?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Mr. Lynch, you're next.
Ed Lynch, District 7. So the cost, when was the cost incurred? And was this done in-house?
Mr. Halkeodis, how was this prepared? And when was the cost incurred?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think the cost was incurred last fiscal year, fiscal year 18 or 19. Some of the funds were from the engineering department, and other funds were used from a grant that we applied for from the state and received funds to help complete this particular project and to complete the build-out of the town's geographic information mapping system.
Thank you. Follow-up, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, thank you. So then, after tonight, if everything passes, there'll be an adjustment that the engineering department will fix the proper colors, and the zones will be good to go from now on, after this evening. Is that right?
Mr. Halkeodis?
Yes. Any changes to the zoning map will be completed by the engineering department.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Lynch, you're all set. Ms. Langone. All right, Ms. Langone, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Move the question, Mr. Moderator.
No, wait a minute. You just want to tell us who you are.
Judith Langone, District 8. Thank you.
And you move the question?
Move the question. Thank you.
All right, let me see if there's a second to that. Mr. Foley has seconded that. Daniel Foley. District 8. All right. On moving the question, we'll do this with a show of hands. And on moving the question, all those voting yes, please raise your hand now. I'll give it five more seconds. All right, I'm closing the vote, and we have 138 in favor of moving the question. We'll lower all hands. And please don't raise your hand to vote or do anything while we lower all the hands, and then I'll call for the no votes. All right. All hands are lowered. All right, those voting no on moving the question, please raise your hand. We'll give that 10 more seconds. All right, I'm calling that. There are two votes in opposition. So the question has been moved, 138 to 2. We now move to a vote on the motion under Article 7 to adopt, as the new official zoning map, the digitized version that has been described by Mr. Halkeodis. This requires a 2/3 vote. Christian, do you have a poll prepared for this?
Yes, I do.
All right, so we'll try a poll. So on doing a poll, remember, folks, you'll be asked the question, and you click yes or no, and then click submit. Do not click the X up in the corner when you're done. The staff will take care of closing us all out of this. But if you click the X in the corner, you might create problems for you yourself later on in terms of voting in polls. So Christian will put the question up for us when it's ready, and people will be asked to vote yes or no. Now, are there any panelists that wish to be moved down as attendees? Or are the panelists right now content?
We do have two panelists that, Rachel from MAPC will be moving to the attendee list, and that's Thomas Maloney and Christina Mulvihill. So they will be moved to the attendees list and moved back when the vote is done. All right.
And both of those people should have been moved.
Great. All right. So everyone, like the moderator was saying, you will see a box pop up on your screen. Make sure that you click yes or no, and then submit in order to submit your vote. And once you click submit, the box will disappear. And when the vote is done, we will share the results. So I'm launching that poll now. You should be seeing that on your screen.
I'm going to allow 30 more seconds for this, just to make sure everybody's had a chance, since this is the first time we're trying this method of voting. All right, Christian, we can close the poll. Christian, you're muted.
Even the trainer has problems. So I'm going to share the results now, so you should see another box pop up on your screen.
A vote of 160 in favor, zero opposed. That has carried. All right, so Article 11 has been disposed of. We're going to move on to Article 12. Mr. Riley and I are going to play musical chairs, and he is going to take over. I'm going to mute right now, and you'll next see Mr. Riley acting as temporary moderator. Good evening, everybody. One of the advantages of being the moderator is I get to take my mask off. So that's progress. That's progress already. Moving to Article 12, and why don't we start with a report from Mr. Porro from the planning board?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 12, rezoning Route 1. Planning board held a public hearing on January 25th, 2021 to accept public comments, Article 12, to change the zoning districts along the Route 1 corridor. No members of the public attended the virtual public hearing. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the article to town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Porro. Sorry.
Excuse me. There were, the vote came on Article 12, a quantum of vote in accordance with housing and economic development, House 5250, signed on January 14th, 2020. And it has to do with the Section 2 districts. And the motion was a majority vote, okay, that the town amend the Norwood zoning bylaw and zoning map in Section 2, zoning districts to delete Highway Business District HB and to insert New Boston Providence Highway District, in parentheses, BPH, close parentheses, and to insert a misuse overlay district, parentheses, MUOD, close parentheses, within the BPH district, and amend the boundary lines for the manufacturing district, in parentheses, M, and limited manufacturing district, LM, in parentheses, as shown on the revised zoning map. It was offered by Mr. Ernest Pachakowski, town meeting member and member of the planning board, and seconded by Joseph Sheehan, member of the planning board, as well as a member of town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Porro. I understand there's an amended motion that's being made. Is that correct, Mr. Halkeodis?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. There was an amendment made to the motion just recently on Friday. I have that revised motion. We also have Ernie Pachakowski, planning board member, that made the motion. And I think he is available to give the updated version. Or if need be, I can run through what was incorporated into this revised motion.
Why don't we proceed this way? As I understand it, Mr. Halkeodis, there are six motions under this article. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And they're interrelated, but for reasons you'll explain, they have different quantum of votes depending on the motion. Would it be helpful for you to give the town meeting an overview of the entire area of motions we're dealing with? And then we'll move through them one by one?
Yes, I can move forward with my presentation. And then when it's time to vote on the first of the six motions, we could have somebody read the additional information or the additional properties that were added to this particular motion.
That'd be helpful. So if you could do your general presentation.
Thank you, sir. Christian, would you be so kind as to let me share my screen?
You should be all set to share your screen.
All right, thank you. Here we are. Thank you. At the end of last year, the state legislature made several changes to the State Zoning Act, Chapter 48. The first week of January, the governor signed that bill. And this has caused a wrinkle or has made the presentation of Article 12 more complicated because it is changing the vote that's required based on different sections of Article 12. The changes that were passed by the legislature affect properties that have, or zoning amendments in this case, that have multifamily housing, mixed-use development, affordable housing. Those zoning requirements have changed from a standard 2/3 vote, which is the way zoning has been done for over 50 years in Massachusetts, to lower that required vote down to a simple majority. In addition to those types of housing that have a lowered vote count, any parking related to that housing also just needs a simple majority vote. Article 12 is unfortunately going to now have six separate motions. I say five here, but there's actually another one. And that's going to cause a little bit of confusion, but we're here to help break that down and explain it. So those sections of the zoning bylaw that will be amended that include mixed-use, multifamily, or affordable housing, will have that simple majority vote. And the other sections of the zoning bylaw that we're changing will have the 2/3 vote. In 2019, the planning department applied for and received a $36,000 grant from the state to study the Route 1 corridor. We hired consultant Ted Brovitz to initiate this study and to make recommendations for zoning changes. As part of this process, the planning department identified several issues or problems along the four-mile section of Route 1. One of the main problems that I had heard about when I came to the town several years ago was that that four-mile section of road actually was four different zoning districts inter-dispersed throughout the Route 1. throughout the Route 1 corridor. Those zoning districts are the Highway Business District, the Manufacturing District, Limited Manufacturing, and the General Residence District. Each of these four different zoning districts have different zoning requirements and and those requirements are different in terms of frontage, minimum lot size, setbacks, and building heights. We also identified a number of problems that we wanted to try to solve through this rezoning amendment. We have a mix of signs. Some are oversized, some are very tall, like the Newbury Carmick sign. Some areas of Route 1 have sidewalks, some don't. Encroachment into the state road, we've got some parking spaces in one case, we have businesses operating out into the layout of the state road and we characterize that as encroachment. Some sections of Route 1 look pretty good, other sections not so good. Some sections have attractive landscaping, other sections not much landscaping at all. When we went through the municipal vulnerability preparedness process a few years ago, we were told that there are two areas of town that suffer from this urban heat sink effect, hot spot areas that are hotter than other parts of town. And as you can imagine, those areas that have a lot of asphalt, like parking lots around Route 1 are what causes the heat to build up. So the two areas in town are the downtown and Route 1. Those are the most developed portions of our town. We're proposing to adopt a new zoning district along that Route 1 corridor, but instead of having completely new regulations for that Route 1 corridor, what we're doing is cross-referencing existing sections of the zoning bylaw. So as a result, part of the confusion that we'll get into a little bit later is all these different sections of the zoning bylaw that are going to be modified to accommodate this new Boston Providence Highway District. Those sections of the zoning bylaw that are going to be changed by Article 12 are Section 2.1, the establishment of districts, Section 2.3, the zoning map, Section 3, the use regulations, Section 3.15, the table of use regulations, Section 3.16, the notes to the table of use regulations, Section 4, the dimensional regulations, Section 4.11, the table of dimensional regulations, Section 6.1, the parking requirements, 6.2, signs, Section 6.3, buffers, Section 6.4, landscaping and screening, and Section 9.4, the mixed-use overlay district. I mentioned that we brought onboard a consultant to help us out with this project. This is probably the biggest rezoning that the town has ever seen and it's the biggest rezoning that I've ever been involved with and it was a big project. The planning process involves as a first step, always doing an inventory of existing conditions. And so our consultants inventoried the whole four-mile stretch of road. They looked at topics like transportation, mobility, natural resources and open space, the current market trends in the real estate market. They looked at the existing zoning districts and those regulations within those districts. From there, we had discussions with the consultants about what we would like to see in the future, what were those issues that we I mentioned earlier that we'd like to try to address and that resulted in a vision plan. The vision plan had several topics that it focused on. These included things like transportation and mobility, conservation and recreation, and land use and zoning. The planning process took us from looking at existing conditions to looking at the zoning, which would then end up as zoning bylaw and map changes that we're discussing tonight. The first section of the zoning bylaw that would be changed is Section 2, the zoning districts. And the change involves eliminating the existing Highway Business District and replacing it with the new Boston Providence Highway District. But in addition to eliminating the Highway Business District, because Route 1 has sections of it that have the manufacturing zone fronting on it and the limited manufacturing zone, we ended up changing some of the limited manufacturing and manufacturing land and bringing that into the Boston Providence Highway District. Those additional properties, to summarize them, are properties in the vicinity of Route 1 and Everett Street and University Ave. There's an area of the Boston Providence Highway that extends beyond just the frontage properties on Route 1. FM Global Way Business Park, that's currently manufacturing. The Vanderbilt Business Park is part Highway Business and part Limited Manufacturing District. Norwood Park South is currently limited manufacturing. Brookside Park is currently manufacturing. And some of the properties south of Sumner Street, Norwood Corporate Center and Extra Space, there are portions of these other zoning districts, LM and M, that are going to be brought into this new Boston Providence Highway District. In addition to those zoning changes, the planning board, in cooperation and conversation with the Board of Selectmen, identified three areas along the Route 1 corridor where we would like to allow some mixed-use development. And by mixed-use, I mean properties that have a combination of commercial and residential on one lot. That can also appear as properties that have commercial on the first floor and residential above. The three areas that we've selected in order from north to south are Everett Street, University Ave. The second is the Manhattan Street, one, a couple of parcels near the traffic circle, and Vanderbilt Park and River Ridge Drive is the third area. This slide kind of zooms in on each of those districts from left to right, the Everett Street and University Ave area, the next one, Boston, the Manhattan Street area, and the third Vanderbilt. Section 9.4 of the zoning bylaw was adopted a couple of years ago and that's the mixed-use overlay district for the downtown. Instead of rewriting new mixed-use overlay districts for the Boston Providence Highway, we simply cross-referenced the existing zoning requirements in Section 9.4. This slide, the diagram, is important to note because it shows what we mean when we talk about the term mixed-use. You can see it identifies on the first floor, commercial properties and under mixed-use, the floors above the first floor could potentially be developed as condominiums or apartments. Along the Boston Providence Highway District, all properties that front on the street need to have commercial as its primary component. So commercial buildings could be located right on Route 1, but you will never see a residential building, a strictly residential building, like a condo or an apartment building fronting on the street. What is possible under the mixed-use regulations, on the same property, a residential building could be located behind a building that has commercial on the first floor. These are some of the performance standards for the mixed-use development district. In addition to that, we are requiring that any residential that is developed along these three particular areas would include an affordability component where 10% of the units created would have to meet the State Department of Housing and Community Development's guidelines for affordable housing. We also cross-referenced the parking requirements in the mixed-use overlay district. Those allow for reducing parking, for tandem parking and structured parking on an as-needed basis by special permit from the planning board. So what does mixed-use development really look like? I showed you the diagrams on the last slide, but I'm going to give you a couple of local examples. This slide is of Legacy Place. It's a place that's familiar to all of us, but most of us probably wouldn't think about it as a mixed-use development. But in fact, you can see on the aerial photo to the right, the development to the rear is residential. And you can see down in the right-hand corner, there's a closer up look of some of the apartments and condominiums that were approved as part of the Legacy Place mixed-use development. It's got that commercial up front, close to Route 1, and then behind that, there's a residential. That's exactly what the proposed bylaw amendment that we're discussing in Article 12 would do. Another good example is Westwood Station in Westwood. This is the newest addition of a mixed-use development into our area and this slide does a great job of again showing exactly what we're proposing here. You'll see commercial in the foreground, but in the background, you can see residential. This is what mixed-use development looks like. They're taking place all over Massachusetts and very rarely now do we see new zoning districts created that are strictly just a commercial district. Most towns are going to this model of mixed-use. It's part of smart growth and the concept for smart growth is to try to create places that allow people to live, work, and play in the same area without having to get into their car and travel. From what you can see here, folks that live in those condominium or apartment buildings in back of there can easily go out to dinner or shop at those retail establishments right in their neighborhood. This is what smart growth development looks like, folks. Again, here we see commercial up front in the foreground. What you really, I can't see in this shot, is to the far right is where there is a condominium or apartment building, the residential component. Back to the zoning bylaw amendments we're proposing to Section 3, the use regulations. This section of the zoning bylaw lists all the different possible uses and it indicates what uses are allowed in each zoning district. You can see in the table across the horizontal bar, those capital letters are zoning districts. And then as you follow down in within the table, it has designations, N for know that use is not allowed, BA needs Board of Appeals approval, PB requires planning board special permit approval, and the Y means yes, it's an allowed use, that's allowed by right. We went through the table of use regulations and made some adjustments to it. It's important to note that as part of Article 12, those types of uses that required a Board of Appeals special permit are being transferred over to the planning board, who will now be the new special permit granting authority in the Boston Providence District. We've added some footnotes to Section 3, footnote 12, ground level commercial. And that's, as I mentioned earlier, you have to have commercial on the first floor. Residential is allowed above, but the buildings in the front need to be commercial and the ground floor needs to be commercial. And the mixed-use overlay districts are also added to Section 3. Section 4 of the zoning bylaw is a section that gives the intensity and dimensional regulations for all of the zoning districts in town.
Mr. Halkeotos?
Yes, sir.
Can I suggest, because you had 10 minutes, you've gone over it, it might be helpful to deal with these as we get the motions on them?
However you want to proceed, sir. I've got a few more slides to go through. I would appreciate another five minutes.
All right. Fair enough.
Thank you. I'll try to finish up. Section 4 of those dimensional regulations, and as I mentioned earlier, they were different for each of the four zoning districts along the Route 1 corridor. So this slide identifies where some changes or adjustments are being made to those intensity and dimensional regulations. It's easier to see this in a graphic format. To the left, you can see the Highway Business Zone, that what the frontage and side and rear setback requirements are. To the right is under the Boston Providence Highway District, where the lot sizes, the minimum lot size is a little bit smaller and there's some more uniformity across along the four-mile stretch of road as it applies to building setbacks and lot size. The maximum building height in the Boston Providence Highway District would be 60 feet. That comes with some caveats. The FAA may restrict the height of buildings in proximity to Norwood Airport. It's important to understand that 60 feet along Route 1 really isn't new. 60 feet is allowed in the Highway Business Zone right now and it's allowed in the manufacturing zone if the building is set back from the road. Some local examples on the ground that exist today are the Dedham Medical Building, which is 70 feet high, and the Hampton Inn, which is 66 feet high. Similar to what we have in place for the downtown, you can't have a 60-foot-high building right up against the road. There are stepback requirements and this diagram helps to explain that. You have to go back at least 80 feet onto a lot to get to a maximum height of 60 feet. The parking regulations are going to be modified within the Boston Providence Highway District. It will allow for parking structures, tandem parking. This diagram also identifies some of the environmental additions to the bylaw. It will require a sidewalk along the frontage. It requires deciduous shade trees. It encourages parking to be on the side and the rear of the buildings, but does allow some parking in the front. The sign regulation, Section 6, is also going to be modified. We're going to encourage monument ground signs that have landscaping around them as opposed to those tall signs that really feel out of scale and out of character for the Route 1 corridor. So this diagram shows that if you want to have a really tall sign, you have to go back a long way, which would put it in the middle of some of the properties. So over time, we will see signs change. All the existing signs that are on the ground for those businesses are grandfathered and will not change until there's some kind of a change requested by the property owner. This slide again identifies where we're making some changes to buffering and landscaping and it shows the sidewalk and the deciduous trees, the building envelope and placement. The planning board recommends approval of Article 12, as does the Board of Selectmen, and Article 12 was also endorsed by the Pawntet Regional Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Halkeotos. I think just to give people a roadmap of what's going to happen, as Mr. Halkeotos mentioned, we have six motions and we would like to try to deal with the issue motion by motion. So just so that you have a sense of the motions. The first motion basically adopts the Boston Providence Highway District. The second seeks to amend use regulations in that district. The third seeks to amend the dimensional regulations. The fourth is an amendment of off-street parking and parking structures. The fifth is a amendment to the regulation of signs, buffers, landscaping, and the fifth establishes residential density regulations. So that's the way we're going to proceed. We'll start with the first motion and Mr. Patrikowski, you have that motion? Christian, is somebody coming over live on the screen?
Yes, it sounds like there's maybe somebody who is a panelist who's unmuted. So if you are a panelist, please mute yourself. Thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me now, Christian?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On Article 12, the first motion recommended by the planning board, that the town amend the Norwood zoning bylaw and zoning map in Section 2, zoning districts to delete Highway Business District HB and to insert new Boston Providence Highway District, BPH, except for the following properties. 249 Dean Street, assessor's map 15, block 21 lot 7, 253 Dean Street, assessor's map 15, block 21 lot 3, 255 Dean Street, assessor's map 15, block 21 lot 4, 257 Dean Street, assessor's map 15, block 21 lot 5, and 259 Dean Street, assessor's map 15, block 21 lot 9. And in addition to insert a mixed-use overlay district, MUOD, within the Boston Providence Highway District and amend the boundary lines for the manufacturing district, M, and limited manufacturing district, LM, as shown on the revised zoning map.
Mr. Patrikowski, you want to be heard on the motion?
I do.
Go ahead.
Do I go now? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In regards to Article 12, this amendment to rezone Route 1 is something that is way overdue. As it currently stands, as Paul noted, there are four different zoning districts within four different criteria for each. For example, if you want to open a restaurant, you may be able to do it on one parcel, but 100 yards down the road, you might not be able to due to a different zoning restriction. We did add a mixed-use housing component in a few selected parcels, not as a single use or major part of a lot, but as a secondary use. The board felt that some form of housing done correctly done correctly, in the right location and to the standards outlined in the bylaw, would be appropriate. Also, we had originally included the five single-family homes, I read in the motion, located at the bottom of Dean Street between the Ponce River and Route 1. It was done to correct some split lots and to square off the district. After discussion with some of the property owners, at their request, we removed them from the new zoning. Our goal here is to have Route 1 more consistent, to have more consistent regulations, have better continuity through better landscaping requirements, setbacks, buffering, signage, building designs, and usage, and to continue to have Route 1 be our commercial corridor. A long-range view of what happens on Route 1, and it is aimed at future development and redevelopment. I ask for your support on Article 12. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patkowsky. There's been a question raised, which is a good question, and that is, because there are multiple motions, will each successive motion be conditioned on the passage of the balance of the motions? And the answer is no. They're independent motions, and Tom Beatty can act on each motion as it sees fit. I have Ann Haley as a registered speaker on this motion.
Did that work?
Yep, we can hear you.
Ann Haley, District 4. I have some questions, and then I have some remarks. And my first question is that should we decide that we don't want, that everything else is okay with this article, but we don't want to have mixed-use, i.e. housing, in those, all of those districts, or we want to make just one of those areas of mixed-use instead of three to sort of try things out? Can we do that?
Can you do it as a matter of town meeting power, or can you do it as a matter of regulation and law?
Well, either or, or both. The, what I was trying to get at is, I've heard from a few folks is that they might want to see what it's like in one of those three districts, but as I'm reading through these motions, it seems that they all build on one another. And so we would have to take out mixed-use out of the first motion to make that change, or change it there, and then change it subsequently to all of the other motions. Am I correct?
Mr. Halkeotis, you have any insight on that question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It would be difficult to carve out the mixed-use overlay district requirements from Article 12. For example, the first motion, which amends Section 2, that we're discussing right now, changes the zoning map, and it adds those three mixed-use overlay districts to the zoning map. Other sections of Article 12, whether they relate to parking, or the intensity and dimensional requirements, may also involve changes to Section 9.4, the mixed-use overlay district. They could involve signs or parking. And so it would be very difficult to eliminate the mixed-use overlay districts from Article 12 as it's currently written, unless somebody has taken the time to identify each one of those cross-references that would involve the mixed-use overlay district. So it is possible. We don't recommend it, and it would be, there's the possibility that if it was done and done incorrectly, there would be unintended consequences to other sections of the zoning bylaw.
Ms. Haley?
Thank you. I do have a couple of other questions, please. The dimension, in the dimensional requirements, it was on page 12 of the information that was sent out to us before town meeting. It appears that those setbacks have changed so that there is less of a setback in some of those things. And then we further talk about greenscape and landscaping. Are the areas, okay, so I don't have that page open in front of me, I apologize, but in one of the requirements has gone down from, what was the frontage setback? Page 12. Yep, got it. Let's see. That minimum lot frontage is 100 feet, 80% maximum lot cover, and then we go down to minimum open space is 20%, down from 25. And let's see, minimum front setback, 20 feet, which is down from 50 feet. So are they expected to put the green trees and shrubbery and things in that 20 feet? Or is that, do we have a special amount of land that is supposed to be green, and then they have to have the 20 feet? So I'm envisioning a parking lot, 20 feet, a building set back from Route 1, 20 feet because there's a parking lot there. And then where are they supposed to put this greenery?
Mr. Halkeotis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thanks for that question. It's a good question. The 20-foot setback is the distance between the edge of the right-of-way of Route 1 and the closest part of a building that could be located on the lot. The trees and the sidewalk need to be located within that 20-foot setback right up close to the road. And the 20 feet would allow for a row of parking within that, but the 20 feet is the minimum setback requirement. And in many cases, I think what we'll see is buildings that are a little bit further back that would allow for two rows of parking and the green landscape buffer with the five-foot sidewalk located within it.
Thank you, Mr. Halkeotis. Ms. Haley, anything else?
So that infringes significantly on the amount of cars that can be parked there.
Mr. Halkeotis?
Yes. Over the last 20 years, planners have been recommending that parking be located to the sides and the rear of buildings, and to move the buildings closer to the street so they're more visible. So that's what this bylaw tries to promote, is to relocate the parking, not all in front of the building, with the building set further back from the road. But when the buildings move closer to the road, it provides opportunities for people driving by to understand what that business is. If they have displays in the window, they're more visible. So the parking would be encouraged to the side and the rear.
And but the rear has also been lowered by 10 feet, right? Minimum rear yard, minimum side yard. All of those have changed. You've lessened the number of feet that surrounds a building, so that it is more congested. You're going to have more buildings in there because you have reduced the number of feet.
Ms. Haley, that's a question through me to Mr. Halkeotis?
Yes, of course that is.
I thought it was. Mr. Halkeotis?
Thank you. So, yes, the rear setback, the distance between the back of a building and the property line, is changing from 30 feet in the current highway business zone to 20 feet in the Boston Providence Highway District. However, there is footnote 16, which makes it clear that when there is, the Boston Providence Highway District, when it abuts a residential district, footnote 16 states that in the Boston Providence Highway District, where lot line abuts residential zoning district, the minimum rear yard setback is 30 feet, 20 feet. Parking is prohibited within that setback area. Parked garages shall be no closer than 40 feet on the lot, and setback area is subject to landscaping and screening requirements, such as fences, in Section 6.4. The minimum side yard setback can be reduced to zero when there are adjacent properties that have agreed to a shared driveway, internal access, or shared parking facilities. Parking is not allowed in the front yard setback and must meet the street requirements in Section 6.4. So there are special circumstances for when that 20-foot rear setback is extended to 30 feet when it abuts a residential district, and in that case, no parking can be located there, and there needs to be landscaping and additional screening. In most cases, for bigger projects that require a special permit from the Planning Board, the Planning Board would require as a condition of approval that like a six-foot solid fence would be erected to try to protect an abutting residential district.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Haley?
Yes, one other question through you, Mr. Moderator. I had spoken to Ms., actually, I probably made a pest of myself when I was speaking to Mr. Halkeotis over the last couple of weeks. The, could he please tell the folks, I have a real aversion to 60 feet in buildings, lots of 60-feet buildings on Route 1, even if they're set back. Could, Mr. Halkeotis, could you tell me the number of units per, I think it was acre, at Avalon Bay?
Mr. Halkeotis?
So the question's about the density.
Yes.
In, at Avalon. And I had that written down somewhere, but there we go. So Avalon Bay is 8.73 acres. There are 198 units, and the density in terms of unit per acre is 22.68 units per acre.
Okay, so if we took a lot that was the size of the one that is the, on page 12, in the materials that you sent out to us, do you know how many units would be in a lot of that size?
No, it's based on floor area ratio. But I can tell you that following that approach, more density is allowed than what's allowed in the downtown mixed-use overlay district, with the maximum number of units per acre is 36 by special permit and with some contributions from the property owner to the district. In the mixed-use overlay district, because it's taking, excuse me, in the Boston Providence Highway District, because it's taking this different approach of a floor area ratio, we believe that the density could approach 40 units per acre of apartments or condominiums. This is deliberate because we feel that the Route 1 corridor is a corridor that can accept additional growth. The location of the mixed-use overlay districts were strategically placed at major crossroads that would help to alleviate any traffic generated from those areas.
Thank you. Ms. Flanagan is our next registered speaker. Ms. Flanagan? Ms. Flanagan, if you could unmute yourself.
Yep, it just took a while for that to pop up.
No problem.
Ms. Flanagan, District 9. Good evening, town meeting members. I'm speaking today in hopes of gaining your support in obtaining more time to properly understand the ramifications of the effects of Article 12 on the properties of homeowners in District 9 specifically. The owners of the properties that abut the new Boston Providence Highway District were never directly informed of the changes in zoning, which may dramatically affect the quality of life for those residents. Examples of this are, the residents at 249 through 259 Dean Street were never informed that their own properties were scheduled to change from residential to Boston Providence Highway District. While this particular issue has been rectified over the weekend, resulting in our homes being changed back to residential zone, the other major issue for these residents is that the small parcel of land between our homes and then the Ponce River is still being rezoned for Boston Providence Highway District, while all other land on the east side of Dean Street that surrounds this parcel is designated as residential. The town has stated that they have no plans for utilizing this land, and that the land 200 feet back from the riverbed, which is this parcel of land, is locked by Conservation Commission rules and bylaws. It seems that since the town is engaging in this mammoth rezoning effort, which originally misclassified our homes, they may have seen that there's no reason to rezone this particular parcel of land to Boston Providence Highway District because it is locked by residential properties. Unfortunately, after a weekend of phone calls and emails with the Town of Norwood representatives, culminating in a solid day today trying to understand and rectify this, we were unable to turn that wooded lot that separates us from the River Ridge Office Park into residential-zoned land. This weekend, I spoke with residents on Hillcrest Road, who were not notified directly that the residential zone between their properties and the Subaru dealership would be changing to Boston Providence Highway District. This residential zone is important to these residents as it creates a buffer between their backyards and life on the highway. When Subaru acquired this property, the town ensured that the residents, ensured the residents that Subaru would be required to maintain a thick tree line to give the residents some separation between the properties. Over the years, this tree line has thinned, and the residents have been voicing concerns regarding the noise level from the dealership intruding on their space when they're utilizing their backyards. This noise includes employees setting off car alarms to find the car that they're looking for in the lot, foul language thrown around between employees and delivery drivers, deliveries of cars during the night, and the subsequent idling of the trucks as it's a great place to take a rest. These residents would like to find out what this change in zoning will mean for that property, for their tree line, and for the future usage of that lot, for Subaru, or for the next business to occupy that land. They deserve the time to ask questions and for their concerns to be heard. Residents of Edge Hill Road will be affected by the rezoning of the wooded land currently residentially zoned that separates their homes from the parcel of land which currently homes Yankee Spirits and the large, currently empty, building. This land provides a buffer for these residents between their homes and what is slated to be a large parcel of land zoned as Boston Providence Highway District. For point of reference, this wooded lot is owned by the same owner as the property currently occupied by Yankee Spirits, as well as the BMW Gallery. I spoke with residents of Westview Drive, who will be affected by the rezoning of the properties located behind their homes, which consist of the property currently utilized by Republic Plumbing Supply, the property currently owned by Ernie Bach Jr., and the property currently utilized by Infinity Dealership. The back part of these lots are currently zoned as residential and create a buffer between these residents and the businesses on Boston Providence Highway. Residents were not directly notified of these proposed changes to zoning, which have a direct impact on their abutting properties. When asked, the town informed me that they do not need to notify anybody directly in order to change zoning. They are only required to put a notice of public hearing in the newspaper, and after that, it only requires town meeting approval. I urge you today to vote no or to take no action on this matter. This allows the residents to research if this zoning change may have on their property. The town planners have said that this zoning change will have no effect on the property of a resident. However, I would like for you to consider what has happened through the years to the neighborhood that I grew up in and currently still reside in. The properties on the edge of the property, which is utilized by Yankee Spirits, whose addresses are 250, 254, and 258 Dean Street, which abut the property at 940 to 950 Providence Highway in their rear, were family homes during my childhood. 250 through 254 Dean Street was one home with a large tomato garden, and 258 Dean Street was another family's home with a lovely lawn and a low picket fence. When that side of the street was rezoned to limited business, it was to accommodate a TV repair shop that the owner of the property at 250 Dean Street wanted to put in for a friend. We in the neighborhood were told that it would not change anything for us. The tomato garden was removed and the TV shop was constructed. That TV repair shop then became a hairdresser shop and is now the home of Stash's Pizza. The property at 258 Dean Street, when that family sought to sell, found it was now only conducive to business, and it was sold to the Frame Center, who removed the fence and paved the lawn for parking. So I can attest that a simple change in zoning can dramatically change the dynamics of a neighborhood in one generation. In fact, when questioning the town planners regarding these proposed changes for the Dean Street properties from limited business to Boston Providence Highway District, which will open up these properties, the two small apartment buildings, and the wooded land across the brook to highway business use, I was told that, quote, "This area of Dean Street is not a neighborhood and never was a neighborhood," end quote. I can assure a neighborhood," end quote. I can assure you that it was indeed a neighborhood, and that the five homeowners left here, two of whom are descendants of the original family who owned all of this property, still consider this our neighborhood. A change in zoning can have dramatic effects on every abutting property. For these reasons, we request that the members of town meeting vote no or take no action on this article to allow residents the opportunity to work to better understand what the long-term effect of this rezoning plan may have on the quality of life that they enjoy on their own residential property. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. And I should mention that each speaker is limited to five minutes unless they request an extension from the, uh, from the, from the meeting. The next registered speaker is Ms. Homewood.
Mr. Moderator, could I be given the opportunity to respond to some of the comments that were made?
Uh, I think let's get through the registered speakers unless you could ask a direct question, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, could you repeat that name?
Debbie Homewood.
Uh, so Ms. Homewood should be able to unmute.
Uh, Ms. Homewood, do you have the mute button down in the bottom-left corner of your screen?
Got it.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we're with you. Ms. Homewood.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Could I ask, uh, Mr. Halak Kiotis to respond to the previous question and then take my spot next?
Sure. Which question would you like him to respond to?
Um, the last speaker, which was Paul, I believe?
Right.
Would I do that?
Sure. Mr. Halak Kiotis, you want to respond to the comments by Ms. Flanagan?
Thank you. I'll, I'll try to respond. There were, there are a lot of comments there, but I'll do my best. Christian, would you enable me to share my screen, please?
Yes. You should be all set to share.
Okay. One second.
Oh, as, as we're reading Mr. Halak Kiotis' screen, I'm just going to note that if you have your hands raised, just keep them raised. Um, they're still there, even though you can't see them. But they'll be back when I'm back sharing my screen.
I wanted to take the opportunity to explain, um, why we made some of the decisions we made regarding the zoning district boundaries for the Boston Providence Highway. As you know, it's a four-mile stretch of road that has two sides. There's eight miles of, uh, new zoning district boundaries. In most cases, when the manufacturing or the limited manufacturing zone abutted, uh, Route One and extended back, that was as far back as the rezoning went. But in some areas that we've identified, it did, um, extend further out. Uh, there were other considerations that we made to determining what should be in the Boston Province Highway and what should not be included. Split lots are a piece of property that is partially within one zoning district and another district. It can even be three districts. Split lots are usually a problem for everyone involved, and, um, from a zoning standpoint, uh, it's desirable to try to, uh, put a lot completely in one zoning district or in another zoning district. We had a number of split lots that we tried to, uh, to do that with, and the decision criteria that we used was to simply look on the ground through, um, aerial photos at what the current use was. If a property was split between, uh, a residential zone and a business zone, but it was currently being used for residential, we tried to keep that property in the residential district. Some of the examples I'm about to show you are situations that were the opposite, where we had lots that front on Route One, but the rear portion of the lot was in the general residence district. And, uh, in those cases, because the property was in commercial use, we chose to put the entire lot in the Boston Providence Highway District. This is an example, um, that the previous speaker, uh, mentioned. And, uh, as you can see, I, I am pointing here to five properties that, uh, are single-family zoned now. This is an example of what our current zoning map looks like today. Uh, it's the color map, so it's the map that was adopted in Article 11. These properties here are, have single-family homes, and originally, we had planned to incorporate those into the new Boston Province Highway District. But when we were contacted on Friday by, uh, town meeting member Ms. Flanagan, she, uh, expressed her, uh, reluctance to have those added to the district. So in listening to her concerns, we made that modification to the motion to pull these properties out of the Boston Province Highway District and let them remain as general residence. Across the street here, you can see in red, uh, a triangular point. This is an example of a split lot, and this is the neighborhood that, um, she was referring to. Here we have, uh, the Gulf Station, we've got a single-family home, Stash's Pizza. This is an access to the property, uh, where Yankee Spirits is located. And these two lots, um, are residential with their apartment buildings, and you can see that these lots are split between two zones. This was an example of where we looked at the current uses. In this case, it was the framing center and Stash's Pizza, and we said, "They're in commercial use now. They have been for many years, and let's pull those into the Boston Province Highway District." So our original proposal was to, uh, include these five properties, uh, that have single-family homes. After hearing, um, the concerns from town meeting member Flanagan, we decided to pull those out. And so this is what the map would look like under the current motion, where you see those properties remaining as in the general residence district. However, across the street, we've added the Boston Providence Highway District, and we've resolved those split lots. So that's an example of, of what we were doing. In addition to that, we also, um, have properties that she mentioned, um, in, in a residential subdivision nearby, and we believe that the Boston Providence Highway zoning district regulations have protections built into them regarding setbacks and landscaping and screening that help to protect adjoining residential neighborhoods. In the case that was given, not only, um, we are rezoning a portion of the general residence district located between the BMW car dealership, but in the back of the car dealership is, is Route One, and it's, um, the Napolson River. And the Napolson River is protected by the Rivers Protection Act, which regulates any activity within 200 feet in either direction. So in that example, while I understand that those residents, um, have some concerns about having the, uh, the BMW property completely changed to Boston Province Highway District, there are protections in place from the river and from the zoning setback requirements. We've worked on this with a consultant, the planning board, and the Board of Selectmen for, um, um, over a year, and we believe that we've got protections put into place in this bylaw amendment. So I would urge you against, um, tabling this article for now. There's a provision in the State Zoning Act which states that if this is not approved, it would have to wait two years to come back before town meeting members. We think we've done our homework on this and studied it. Um, and the, and the last point I would like to make, that in the event that, that there has been some kind of an undesirable outcome or, uh, problem from this rezoning, we can always correct that by coming back to town meeting and making an adjustment to the zoning bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Halak Kiotis. Uh, Ms. Homewood, anything further?
Not, yes, I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Yep.
Am I still on?
You are.
Okay, thank you. Um, I can appreciate Mrs. Flanagan's, uh, Ms. Flanagan's presentation, and it has always been my desire to work with the businesses and protect the neighborhoods. That's how I got into this process in the beginning. Um, this is, for the two terms I was on the planning board, this is something that was always an issue. Our, our zoning rules were not clear. It's, it was very hard to make decisions because there was too much ambiguity. Um, I wel, we welcome our businesses. They help pay, they pay a higher tax rate. Um, there, but we need to be more consistent, which is why I'm voting in favor of this act. I would like Mr. Halak Kiotis, now he's on record saying that we could do something with that buffer. If we could do something in the amendment with the other Dean Streets, I think we should be able to do that for every neighborhood that is concerned. The setbacks have always been my issue with, um, rules that were not, um, succinct. It helps to be consistent, and the frustration and the misinformation, the way this zone, the whole Route One is broken up, has been a problem. Again, for the two terms I spent on the planning board, it was always a problem. You, there was no rhyme or reason. So I commend Mr. Halak Kiotis and the planning board for keeping going with this. It's been about eight years of, of this. Uh, the plan to improve the visual of Route One, I think, is of paramount importance because it's a lot of that what we see in town. Just as important are the neighborhoods. The setbacks from how we abut into residential is just as important. Um, if the, if Route One looks better, I think we'll get better. Well, my screen just completely changed.
That's all right. We can all hear you.
Okay. If the area looks better, we'll get better tenants. We will get better businesses. People will use our businesses. I think if they can do it over at Westwood Station, which is a, a major undertaking, that everybody that I've talked to says looks great, I think Norwood should be able to do the same thing. So I, Ms. Ms. Flanagan did a great job of explaining that we need to protect the neighborhoods behind commercial as well as being succinct with commercial. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Homewood. Uh, the last registered speaker I have is Ms. Sarah Sullivan. And, uh, Christian, if you could get the participants list back up, that'd be great, along with the motion. Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, we should be able to hear you.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I am, uh, Sarah Sullivan, District Nine. Um, I spoke with both Ms. Flanagan and a couple of neighbors from the area that abuts, um, the Route One between Dean Street and the Ha, and the Rotary. And, um, what I would like to bring up is there is, there is quite a big change to, I understand what Mr. Kelly Kiotis explained, the split lots. But if you look at the zoning map that we currently have, and then look at the zoning map that is, is up for the changes for the Boston Providence Highway, the Boston Providence Highway District is going directly up against Hillcrest Drive and Westview Drive. Um, I understand they were split lots, but there was a residential buffer. And I, while I can't see where the river is on there, and forgive me, I don't know, because I don't travel the river there, obviously. Um, I'm, if there's a 200-foot protection from the river, why would we rezone that to Boston Providence Highway District? Why wouldn't we just leave it as residential to continue the buffer between the residential district and the Route One? While I understand if we get better tenants on Route One, but that particular section of Route One has quite a few tenants. I don't, I don't see Republic Plumbing Supply going anywhere. I don't see the car dealerships going anywhere. So to me, those tenants already exist. There's already issues with them, with noise and stuff backing up to those neighborhoods. If we allow those property, that area to get larger, which I'm, I'm toggling back and forth between these maps, and it's quite, quite a significant diff, difference, I'm not sure how we're protecting the neighborhoods back there. No amount of trees is going to protect those neighbors if, if the property comes right up to their, to the back of their streets. And it's hard because obviously I can't show you how I'm toggling between them on my computer. Um, and so that's one comment. And then the other comment, um, I had was, one, I think it's extremely concerning that people who are going to be directly affected by a zoning change were not contacted when their properties, the zoning of their properties were going to be changed. I don't know how they shouldn't have been contacted. That should give all of us as residents of Norwood a bit of pause, because if they could change how we zone, zone our properties without notifying us directly, that's concerning to me as a resident of Norwood. And then finally, regarding the, the mixed-use developments, but also just, um, the zoning on some of these properties, while I understand they chose three different areas for the mixed-use development, I strongly object to the, to the notion that there are major crossroads at, at those intersections that alleviate additional traffic at those areas. I'm going to speak to my, my area, which abuts, abuts the one on the Hat, District Nine, abuts the Manhattan Street proposal. And if anyone who travels Napolson Street thinks that Napolson Street is going to alleviate any traffic from Route One, my goodness, we need help on Napolson Street and, quite frankly, Manhattan Street coming to our section of District Nine every afternoon, because it will constantly back up at the circle. And to think that that is considered a major thoroughfare is ridiculous. And I apologize, but that's just how we have to travel on Napolson Street on a regular basis. And anybody who does it cannot believe that that's a major thoroughfare that will alleviate traffic off of Route One. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Halak Kiotis, can you just address just the, the details of what the notice requirements are that you're operating under?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, Chapter 48, the State Zoning Act, Section 5, lays out the process for adopting zoning bylaw and zoning map amendments. It does not require notice to anybody other than neighboring communities and the State Department of Housing and Community Development. That doesn't sound right to me either, honestly. Um, but we follow the state law, and that's what the state law requires, and we met those notice requirements. Um, but I, I share the concerns that, um, that that doesn't seem to make any sense. Uh, but it is the law, and we have followed the law in noticing, uh, uh, the other communities, uh, that are required, but we don't notify individual property owners. As I mentioned here, we've got eight miles of, uh, new zoning district boundaries, and there are hundreds of properties affected by this change.
Thank you, Ms. Halak Kiotis. Uh, that's the, uh, the list of registered speakers. I'll now go to speakers. Uh, I was going to say from the floor. I'm not, I guess, from the, from the ether, I guess it is. Uh, Mr. Brody, you're, uh, you're up next. Stephen Brody.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Steve Brody, District Four. And I, I have two items that I wish to address. First of all, I do agree with Paula Flanagan and Sarah Sullivan, and I want to thank you both for speaking. But the planning board should definitely explicitly invite any and all abutting neighbors that are going to be involved in any zoning change, and that people affected were not contacted. And I'm personally disappointed that the planning board made no effort to contact the, the affected people. I am going to vote against this motion. Now, the other item is on the, um, on the zoning amendment, zoning bylaw. On the white sheet, if you can please look at page 13, paragraph 4.1.1, Notes to the Table of Dimensional Requirements. Table of Dimensional Requirements. Now, in blue, you have amend notes 2, 3, and 15, but below you have 1, 3, and 15. So, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know which is correct, please.
Ms. Halak Kiotis, can you help us on that? You're unmuted, Ms. Halak Kiotis.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to take a look at that particular section of the zoning bylaw. Give me one moment.
Page 13, the white sheet.
So what is being amended is footnote 2, footnote 3, and footnote 15.
It wants to say the 1. Do you see amend notes 2, 3, and 15? Okay. Do you see the 1 in black?
Yes.
So why is that 1 if amend notes 2? Where is note 2, please?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Footnote 2 is the table that's shown there with a heading that says District and Density. Footnote 2, for multifamily dwellings, the permitted maximum density is the following, and then it presents that table. That is the change to footnote 2. The change to footnote 3 is shown in blue.
Yeah, that's not my question. Okay, because you say that should be footnote 2, but it shows on my copy as footnote 1.
The paragraph is number 1. Does that paragraph indicate the footnote number, Ms. Halak Kiotis?
Yeah, I think that was something that Word did to us inadvertently. Footnote 1 states that 7,500 square feet per dwelling unit, and that is footnote 1 that isn't showing up here, but is footnote 1. What does show up in the article for footnote 1 is, in fact, footnote 2. This has been a problem that we faced before where, when we're doing a list of numbers, Word will automatically reorder it, and much to our dismay, this is one of those instances.
So just to help us here, what you did was amend footnotes 2, 3, and 15, correct?
That's correct.
And on page 13, the paragraph that says paragraph 1 actually should be numbered paragraph 2. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brody, does that help?
Yes, thank you very much.
Anything else, Mr. Brody?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferris, Edward Ferris.
Edward Ferris, District 8. Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please.
Through you, to Mr. Halak Kiotis. In reference to the mixed-use sections within all of the articles, Mr. Halak Kiotis said this was the difficult to remove, but not impossible to remove. I guess the question would be, can this be removed for the mixed use throughout these articles if we want to allow these articles to move forward? Would that have to be an amendment, or would that have to be, could that be proposed by Mr. Halak Kiotis himself?
Ms. Halak Kiotis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is an amendment that could be done, but it requires changes to multiple sections of the bylaw, and I am not prepared tonight to explicitly identify those sections and to make those changes.
Is it something, is it just something that can't be done on the fly? Is that what we're dealing with here?
That's the crux of the problem. Because of the nature of the multiple changes, it's not something that I could do right now. And as I mentioned earlier, whenever we change things or make amendments to zoning articles at town meeting, there's always the risk of some kind of unintended consequence. And while we might be able to carve out sections of the mixed-use zoning requirements from Article 12, there might be remnant sections that didn't get identified or removed that could be a problem later on.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Okay. Understanding that, it was also mentioned that if we do not pass these articles, and I assume that not passing any one of them probably negates all of them, I guess this is two questions, Mr. Moderator. Not passing one of them negates all of them, that's one question. Question number two would be, it was mentioned that this can't be brought back for two years. If that is the case, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes. Mr. DeLuca, maybe you could just explain to the meeting how that works.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I was conferencing here with the Selectman Hajar. Could you repeat the question, please?
Mr. Moderator, the question was, Mr. Halak Kiotis has said that if we do not vote for these articles, or if we vote them down, rather, it would take two years to bring them back to town meeting?
I just, Mr. DeLuca, I wanted you to explain how that works, what the procedure is there.
Right. Yes, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting. Section 5 of Chapter 48 does limit repetitive petitions to the town meeting of zoning ordinances or bylaws. And it states specifically that no proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw, which has been unfavorably acted on, and by unfavorable action, that means either voting it down or tabling it, that it may not be taken up by town meeting for two years after the date of such unfavorable action unless the adoption of such proposed ordinance or bylaw is recommended in the final report of the Planning Board. So if the Planning Board were to take it up again, they could exempt, if you will, that two-year requirement by special vote in the final report of the Planning Board. So it is a general rule that any unfavorable action would prohibit reintroduction of that ordinance or bylaw, unless, of course, the matter was referred, in which case that would not be interpreted as an unfavorable action.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Mr. Ferris?
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. In that case, through you, Mr. Moderator, general question. Is there any direct need to act on any of these articles right now?
Ms. Halak Kiotis, you want to address that?
As I mentioned, we've been working for a year and a half with a consultant on this. There is, we are, our intent here is to have this article voted on as it's been presented tonight. In the event that it doesn't pass, we will take that under advisement, the Planning Board, and we can go back and we can change sections of the bylaw that we think caused it to not be approved, such as some of the concerns that have been raised regarding the mixed-use Ovley District, which I will be able to respond to in a little more detail later if I need to. It's important to note regarding the notice to people that have been affected about this by the zoning change is that this has not been done in a vacuum. We've had two public hearings, three public information sessions, and multiple--
So the question was the need to do it tonight or to do it during this town meeting?
So while the Planning Board hasn't discussed a Plan B, it's our intent to move forward tonight with this. We've been working on it for a long time, and that's the way I'd like to proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Ferris?
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If I can make a statement? I would, I would request, at this point, indefinite postponement to this article and all pertaining articles, for the simple reason that there were concerns brought up by Ms. Flanagan and Ms. Sullivan, and I do agree with them. The, what Ms. Sullivan brought up in the form of traffic concerns, I'm also extremely concerned about. Mixed-use development zones are problematic. And I'll be honest, putting mixed-use development zones at the intersections that are being proposed right now would probably be devastating. Ms. Sullivan mentioned Noponset Street, which is our corridor 95. And I'm from District 8, and I think of Noponset Street, Washington Street, and Upland Road. And there is no diversionary traffic. There is no alternate routes for any traffic to go to. If we increase the density at Route 1, you know, there's no place to put that traffic. And right now, you know, in my district, and granted, many things have changed since the pandemic, but I work as a consultant and I work for a lot of companies. And all of those companies have full plans to go back to work after this pandemic. Many of them are taking advantage of, you know, what they've learned to be able to work remotely, to offer employees the ability to split work between home and office, something that's much better, I think, in general for everybody, as well as quality of life. But the reality is the traffic is not going to go away, and it's just going to get worse. And I want to remind people that Norwood, as a town, we are a small town, but we have one of the highest population densities for our area. And we're number 39 in Massachusetts for population density. We're just a hair below Wellesley, you know, and Framingham, when you get right down to it. Everybody else around us has, in many cases, you know, they're a third less than us. In some cases, they're more than, you know, half of what we have in population density. And every single town around us has more square footage of land than we do. Now, I fully understand the need for this. I really do. And I'm fully in favor of redistricting Route 1, believe me. I think 99% of everything that's been proposed in this plan is probably really good. But there are some parts in here that if we agreed to them, and I know what will happen because we've seen it many times, we're going to get a mixed-use property dropped in, probably at Dean Street, almost definitely at, you know, Route 1, next to me, which is, you know, off the Washington Exchange there and Upland Interchange. And traffic right now backs up all the way down to Noponset Street, all the way down Washington Street, all the way back on Upland Road. And we can't add any more volume to that. There's just no possible way to do it because everything that's backing us up. I'm sorry. My point is, can we do indefinite postponement on all of this?
Is that a motion for indefinite postponement?
I would motion for indefinite postponement on all of the articles, yes. On this article in particular, but seeing how anyone affects all--
I believe we can only do it motion by motion. I don't think we can do a motion for indefinite postponement of six separate motions. But we'll deal with it on this one, and depending on the outcome, we'll then determine what we're going to do moving forward. So there's a motion for indefinite postponement of the motion that's on the floor. That's been seconded by Jerry Slater. We will have a discussion on that motion. Mr. Brandt, I'd ask you to take the name, the hands down, and we'll start with a new discussion on the motion to indefinitely postpone this motion.
Sounds good.
All right. So now if you'd like to address the motion that's on the floor, Mr. Easie. I'm sorry, Mr. Easie, put your hand down. Mr. Pachakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ernie Pachakowski, District 9, and member of the Planning Board. I would really not like to see this go to indefinite postponement. It would close this down for a two-year period. We're talking about traffic for mixed-use developments that have not been planned yet. These are not by right. These are by special permit. So any development or any redevelopment of any part of Route 1 that is not by right is under a special permit, mixed use would be special permit. They would have to come before the Planning Board to get that, in which case the Planning Board holds public hearings to hear all, you know, people's input into it. Obviously, traffic would be a major part of granting a special permit. We may require traffic studies. My own personal opinion on mixed use in apartments, that if you're going to put them in one particular part of town, if it's done correctly and by the bylaw, Route 1 would be the area to do it. I would hate to see this article killed for two years. I ask you to not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pachakowski. No? Ms. Quinn, your hand is down. Oh, no, your hand's up. Ms. Quinn, would you like to speak?
Yes. So Sarah Quinn, District 2. I did have a point of information question in the chat. Can a motion be made to postpone until a specific time, like the spring or annual town meeting?
No.
Okay. So then I would, so then I guess a follow-up question. Is there no other option than indefinite postponement or voting this down?
Well, I suppose vote in favor would be the third option.
Well, clearly, I'm not considering that. Sorry. Then I would like to--
Referral. It could be referral. That's correct. That's actually a good point, and I'm not sure whether Mr. DeLuca appointed, discussed that option. Mr. DeLuca, could you address that option?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. Yeah, there is a rather subtle but very important difference between indefinite postponement and referral. Indefinite postponement is viewed as an unfavorable action, which would trigger a two-year moratorium. Referral is a matter that is a technique whereby the meeting refers the matter to a study and further report at a follow-up meeting. It essentially allows the motion to, or the matter to stay alive and under consideration.
So is it correct, Ms. DeLuca, that in this example, the motion would be a motion to refer it to the Planning Board for the study?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Whatever the meeting's pleasure is, it does make a difference.
All right. Ms. Quinn?
So do I have to wait to do that until after Mr. Ferris's motion is voted on, or could I amend his motion to refer this matter?
If he accepts the amendment, you could.
So I guess--
And the sender, the seconder accepts it. Now you really, now you really put, are you making the motion, Ms. Quinn?
I would like to, yes. Mr. Ferris, I would like to friendly--
Could we recognize, could we recognize Mr. Ferris, simply on the question whether he accepts this as a friendly amendment?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I do consider this a friendly motion, and I was going to ask if I could modify my-- Mr. Moderator, I do consider this a friendly motion, and I was going to ask if I could modify my motion. But even if I can't modify my motion, I agree with Ms. Quinn.
All right. And Jerry Slater, you with a second. Could you just, on the Q and A perhaps, indicate whether you also agree to the motion as a friendly motion? And while we're waiting for that, there's a question whether registered speakers can speak before a motion is made. Mr. Ferris was not a registered speaker, so. And all right, and Ms. Slater has agreed to the friendly, friendly amendment. So at this point, we have before the, the, the meeting, a motion to refer this motion to the Planning Board for further study. And I'm going to assume that the individuals have raised their hand to discuss Mr. Ferris's original motion are also interested in addressing this, so I'll move.
Could I speak to my motion?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting. So I agree that this is important. I recognize the hours of work that went into formulating these proposed changes. And while I understand that the, this was done following the letter of the law, I think that frankly, we're better than that, and that as town meeting members with the representative town meeting, that it is our duty to represent people in the district, and we're hearing loud and clear from people living in the districts that these changes will affect, don't feel comfortable that they had adequate time to explore all of these changes or have their voices heard. And I am therefore recommending referral back to the Planning Board specifically, so that these conversations can be had with the residents in the neighborhoods that will be affected by these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Ms. Bouchard.
I am Sarah Bouchard from District Seven. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Okay, so I would like to strongly voice my support of voting no on referral back to the Planning Board. I think this article is something that needs to be voted on and passed now. I don't think we, as a town, can afford to wait. We've already invested the time and the financial resources in putting together a progressive and forward-thinking set of planning that allows for sustainable growth in our community. Inconsistent planning has a cost. Not developing this land to the highest and best uses, not maximizing the taxable income, you know, this is far greater to undo later. We're far better off, as a town, as a community, to getting ahead of it now, and I think this is a solid piece of, you know, zoning change. Like Ernie said, most of the uses with the highest impact, that concern others in the town generally, you know, talking about traffic and noise, those uses would still require a special permit from the Planning Board and be subject to their own stages of public hearing and community involvement, engagement, engagement with a developer in those proposed uses on those parcels. So it's not as though this will automatically usher in those impacts. There's still an opportunity for the actual proposals to come before the public and have people to have a chance to engage. But generally, this is progressive planning, and it needs to happen now. The, the issues that it's trying to tackle, we can't wait. Climate change, housing crisis, stormwater control and damage drainage. You know, these are things that we don't have the luxury of time to punt on. So I would urge others to vote no on referral back to the Planning Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bouchard. And I'll remind people that the Q and A is, is not for comments on the debate. It is a point of order. If you want to raise a point of order, it would be helpful in the Q and A to indicate what it is, and so that we can, we can deal with it appropriately.
Mr. Moderator, may I just add, if you are raising a point of order, please write the whole point of order out in the question and answer, so that we know what it's about.
That'd be very helpful. Ms. Numi. Kelly Numi.
Would help if I hit the right button. Sorry there. Kelly Numi, District Five, move the question.
All right, move the question. Is there a second for moving the question? Second by Joseph Phillips. So the question has been moved. I think we'll take this vote by raising hands. So we're voting on whether to move the question of Ms. Quinn's motion to table the first motion and refer it to the Planning Board. So this is moving the question on the motion to refer. So all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. We'll give 10 more seconds. Well, that's, we'll close that vote. That's 126. Now please lower the hands. Now, all those opposed to moving the question, please raise your hand. We'll give 10 more seconds. We'll close the vote. That's 24 noes. Motion to move the question counts. So we now move to Ms. Quinn's motion to table this first motion, the motion that appears on the screen, and, not to table, excuse me, to refer the motion to the Planning Board for study. So that's the motion to refer the motion that appears in the board to the Planning Board for study. And we will, at least, and we will take this by a raise of hands. So all those in favor of moving the motion for study, please raise your hand. And we'll wait 10 more seconds. We'll close the vote. It's at 88. All those opposed, we'll lower the, lower the hands, please. We haven't lowered the hand yet. We need to first lower all the hands, so please let, let the, our technical people lower everybody's hands. All right. Now, those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. And we'll wait 10 more seconds. We'll close the vote. 70 opposed, 88 favor. The motion counts. So the motion is referred to the Planning Board for study. Now, that raises the question of the remaining five motions under this article, all of which I think are referred to the Boston-Providence Highway Zone. So I think it would make, make it difficult to adopt them, even if the meeting were inclined to, to meet it. So let me ask the Planning Board, and maybe we'll start with Mr. Halkeodis, and I don't know if you want to refer it to somebody else, what your preference is as to how to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think that the last vote made it loud and clear that town meeting members would like to have the Planning Board go back and look at this further. It, at this point, it doesn't really make any sense to discuss the other motions under Article 12. And, and so what I would recommend is that the same vote be taken for the remaining motions, or somehow for the entire remaining motions under Article 12, to send that back to the Planning Board for further study. And let me invite those folks to join in on the Planning Board meetings to participate in that further study, so that we can make this article be changed, so that it is acceptable to town meeting members.
I mean, the, the other option, Mr. Halkeodis, is there is no motion pending right now, if the, and the Planning Board is the, were the ones who were planning to make the motion. So if the board decided not to make these motions at this point, we would, we would simply move on.
We have a few Planning Board members joining the meeting tonight. I defer to them.
Okay, why don't we start maybe with Mr. Porro? And just, you know, what you're comfortable with, Mr. Porro, it's a, it's an unusual situation.
I would concur with Mr. Halkeodis as the chairman of the Planning Board. I think if that's the wish of the people, then we take advantage of that opportunity to bring it back to the Planning Board and start the process basically all over again.
I guess the procedural question is, do you want to make the motions and have the meeting vote on, refer them to study, or do you want to decide not to make the motions and simply raise them at some future meeting, as you may decide to amend?
I have a quick question on, by not making the motion, do I withdraw the motion, because it has not been made yet, so which?
You're not withdrawing the motion, you haven't made it.
Correct.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr.
Attorney DeLuca here. I'd like to just comment if I could.
Just about to ask you, thank you.
I, I, I think from a procedural standpoint, my recommendation to the meeting is to take up each of the proposed motions, and I think you can do it in one motion. That is to ask the meeting to, to vote whether or not with, with respect to the changes that were proposed to Section Three, Section Four, Section Six, and Section Nine of Article 12 to, to be referred as a procedural matter, consistent with the vote that was taken on Section Two of this article.
All right, that, that's, that's good advice, Mr. DeLuca, as usual. So, Mr. Patcakowski, do you want to make a motion as outlined by Mr. DeLuca?
Yes, I would.
And.
Oh, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Okay, Ernie Patcakowski, District Nine. On behalf of the Planning Board, I would like to make a motion that we refer Article 12, Section, Section Three, Section Four. Let me get my last two sections out here. Section Nine and
Six.
Section Six, that we, those four sections are returned, are re, sent back to the Planning Board for review.
And question's been raised as a point of order, and it's a good one. And that is, should there be a specific time when the Planning Board would report back? And Mr. Patcakowski, in your motion, do you have a suggestion as to when the Planning Board should report back?
Definitely.
Well, no, it needs to be reported back at, either at the fall meeting or at the spring meeting.
I, to be honest with you, Mr. Moderator, I'd, I'd have to confer with the Planning Board and our consultant and town planner to, to see when we could rewrite it, have, again, we would have to have community involvement, which means informational meetings. We would have to have public hearings. I don't know at this point if we could have it at the spring. My guess is probably at the fall, but I would have to confer with the Planning Board. I can't make that decision.
Mr. DeLuca, does there need to be a time certain for the study to be reported back?
No, there does not. And frankly, my recommendation is not to hem in to a particular timeframe, then instead, at the discretion of the Planning Board, when they feel that it's complete and ready for a report, then they may proceed.
Okay, so, so the, the motion of Mr. Patcakowski is for the sections that he identified to refer them to the Planning Board for further study, consistent with the action that was taken on the first motion.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? That's seconded by Sean Conley. Is there debate on that motion? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote on Mr. Patcakowski's motion to refer those matters to the, to the Planning Board. So all those in favor of referring the matters identified to the Planning Board, please raise your hand. We'll give it another 10 seconds. 124 in favor. Yeah. All those opposed to referring the matter for further study to the Planning Board. Well, first, I keep forgetting, need to lower the hands, so please let the, let the technical people, lower everybody's hands. All right, all those opposed to referring the matter, please raise your hand. We'll give it another 10 seconds. All right, we'll close that. That's 10 opposed. So the motions are, all of the motions under Article 12 are referred to the Planning Board for further study. With that, we'll move to Article 13. And on Article 13, does the Planning Board have a report?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Porro.
Article 13 has to do with open lot storage of vehicles. The Planning Board held a public hearing on January 25th, 2021, to accept public comments on Article 13 that proposes to change the zoning regulations for open lot vehicle storage. No members of the public attended the virtual public hearing. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the article at town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Porro. Mr. Patcakowski, do you have a motion?
There we go. Article 13, recommended by the Planning Board that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 3.1.5, Table of Use Regulations by creating a new subcategory in Section G, Wholesale Business and Storage, 3.8 Open Lot Storage of Motor Vehicles as set forth in the warrant.
And Mr. Halkeodis, do you have a presentation on this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 13 proposes to locate any future open lot storage for vehicles into the Boston-Providence Highway District. Because of the action taken on Article 12, I am going to recommend that Mr. Patcakowski offer an alternative motion to take the same action that was taken on Article 12, to refer Article 13 back to the Planning Board for further study, so that it can take a look at this in concert with the changes to Article 12, and not cause this article to be delayed for two years if it is not favorably acted upon. So I'm recommending a motion to take the same action that was just taken on Article 12.
So Patcakowski, would you like to amend your motion? So Patrick Kowski, um, would you like to amend your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to amend my motion to refer Article 13 back to the planning board.
And is it Mr. Sheen who seconded the motion?
Yes, he did.
And Mr. Sheen, do you agree to that amendment in the motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So that's now the motion is to refer this matter to the planning board for further study. Um, and we will now have a discussion on that. Ms. Homewood is a registered speaker on this, on this motion. Someone?
I can withdraw as a registered speaker. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Ms. Doniu is, uh, has her hand raised to speak.
Thank you, I also withdraw, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doniu. Mr. Hajar, no, Mr. Hajar?
Thank you, Mr. Mairead. David Hajar from District Four. Just, uh, questions probably to counsel, but since this proposed zoning amendment was, was initiated, any changes that were being requested by some dealerships were told that this amendment could affect their request because they would be subject to this new bylaw. By the referral motion, does that eliminate that requirement? In other words, would any type of auto dealership be able to propose an open lot vehicle storage in any other zone than Route 1?
Mr. DeLuca, do you want to address that?
Uh, I, I think I can try. What referral of this zoning amendment would do would leave in place our current zoning. So if open lot storage were permitted, it would be permitted to the same extent as it is the case now. This, um, this article and the original motion proposed some changes to that. Now, there is, on the floor, the motion to refer, which would leave in place the current zoning.
Mr. Hajar?
Yeah, so, uh, I am concerned with that then because I, and the planning board has worked hard on a lot of zoning issues over the past year. And leaving this one out until probably the fall leaves a wide door open for further encroachment with regards to open lot vehicle storage or any other kind of storage related to vehicles, could be motorcycles, boats, whatever. So I'm looking for an alternative here. I, I'm not in favor of just, just totally referring it and then leaving the door open. Is there, and I guess I'm asking Mr. Halkiotis, is there an alternative wording that we could make an amendment so that we could vote this to prevent further encroachment by owners or others trying to advance their open lot vehicle storage other than Route 1?
Mr. Halkiotis, you have any, any thoughts on that?
Unfortunately, the action taken on Article 12 and Article 13 will have consequences related to actual projects that were waiting for town meeting action. Article 13 proposes to eliminate open lot storage of vehicles in all zoning districts except for the proposed Boston Providence Highway District. I don't see any alternative, and I understand what Selectman Hajar's concern is, and I think it's a legitimate concern. But, um, this article just says to put it in, in that new district, which has not yet been created. To specifically answer questions about what, what would happen, it, the use is currently allowed in the manufacturing district, and it would remain allowed in the manufacturing district by special permit for small projects of less than 100 vehicles. They would go to the zoning board for special permit for open lot storages. Over 100 vehicles would continue to go to the planning board. It would basically be the status quo. So that there, as one of the previous speakers indicated, there are, uh, there are implications to taking no action on some of these zoning amendments, and this is one of those implications.
Thank you, Mr. Hajar.
Yes, so, uh, the way I'm reading, um, the explanation of Article 13, while it does reference, um, the Boston Providence Highway District, can we amend to require, um, the use in any manufacturing zone requiring the special permission by the planning board? So that at least we have total consistency regarding the intent of what we think we know we want in this town, and that is to confine, um, at some point, open lot vehicle storage along Route 1. But if it has to continue in the manufacturing zone as Mr. DeLuca has indicated, then at least we can get everything under one, knowing what our intent is. Maybe that's too broad for, um, this, this article, but I'm asking the question.
I suspect, I suspect that would go beyond the scope of the warrant. Mr. DeLuca, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, yes, I do think that, um, uh, we would be having some scope issues if we were to amend, uh, in, in that way. That veers quite a bit away from, uh, the current article.
Well, I don't think we could, we, we could accept that motion, Mr. Hajar.
Okay.
Mr. Bodenhoffer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Eric Bodenhoffer, District Nine. And continuing that same line of thinking, I guess through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. DeLuca or, or anyone really who can answer this. What if we amend this, so rather than referencing the Boston Providence Highway District, we refer to the current district, which is, well, one of the current districts, which would be the Highway Business District, thereby limiting open storage to that district, which is along Route 1. It's maybe not quite as broad as the proposed new district, but at least it would be key, taking them out of the manufacturing district.
Mr. DeLuca, do you have an opinion on, on whether that?
Yes, uh, in, in general, it, it's permissible to narrow a, a zoning article, but, excuse me, but not to expand it. So if that's what the suggestion is, to, to narrow it to a, a, a smaller, uh, uh, area than otherwise been noticed to the, um, to the meeting, then that would be permissible.
Mr. Halkiotis, is it correct that the Highway Business District is a subset, if you will, or a subsection of the proposed Boston Providence Highway District?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Highway Business District is one of the four zoning districts along, uh, the Route 1 corridor. There's not, you know, it, it's limited in area. Uh, I think that amendment, um, is possible. Uh, I do caution that, I, I don't know the exact location of all of the Highway Business Districts along Route 1, and, and therefore can't really comment on whether or not there would be some unintended consequences. But in general, I think that this proposal could be a, a compromise to pass this now and, and also continue to look at, uh, what we need to do in the future. So this, this proposed amendment, I think, could work, but, um, there could be some unintended consequences that, that we aren't aware of tonight.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Mairead.
I, I've struggled a little bit to understand how there could be unintended consequences of narrowing, narrowing this, given that the, the current motion would put it everywhere in the... I, I just would be curious what those, what Mr. Halkiotis thinks those might be. How they differ from the broader?
They're unintended and unknown, that's hard to say.
No, I, I understand, but, but I, I fail to see the logic in saying that we know the consequences of putting it in the broader district, and there could be unintended consequences of putting it in a narrower district. It's still going in places where it would be permitted under the motion as currently drafted.
Uh, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please.
Through you. Um, I see Assistant Town Planner Patrick DeShanes, um, has logged in, and I think he's got something to say that might be able to add to this conversation. Could I defer to him, please?
Absolutely, Mr. DeShanes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I think what Paul was talking about, so by opening this up to the Highway Business District without the design regulation that was factored into the Boston Providence Highway District, you're actually, these potential lots would be missing the certain design elements that we factored into the Boston Providence Highway District that would have kind of better designed potential parking lots, potential storage lots. So that's kind of one unintended consequence that I would imagine could possibly be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bodenhoffer?
I, I, Mr. Moderator, I guess my final thing is not a question, but a comment, which is, I guess I'll leave it to the body to decide whether poorly designed parking lots on Route 1 are better or wor- worse than poorly designed parking lots scattered throughout the manufacturing distant, districts elsewhere in the town. Thank you very much.
All right, that, all right. On the motion to refer to, refer the motion to study, um, Mr. Sheen? He made a motion. Yeah, was it second? No, no, he didn't make a motion. No, he said he did not make a motion. Mr. Sheen?
Yes?
We're ready to hear you. You can proceed.
No, I'm fine, I, I didn't, uh...
Okay. Then we'll move on to Ms. Haley. You're next.
Ms. Haley, you should be able to unmute. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Anne Haley, District Four. I, I sort of got lost on this, that last part of that discussion. Was Mr. Bodenhoffer making a, a motion? Or does he want to make a motion? Because I was thinking along the same way as he was, and I would make that motion.
I, I didn't understand Mr. Bodenhoffer to be making a motion.
You didn't? What?
I did not. I mean, he discussed it, but he never, as far as I could tell, never actually made the motion, so. The motion that's on the floor right now is the motion to refer to further study.
Okay, could I ask what Mr. Bodenhoffer's motion was?
Uh, no, because he didn't make one. I mean, he, he in general discussed limiting the changes to Article 3 Highway Business District as opposed to the Boston Providence Highway District. I think is a fair summary of what he proposed.
Okay, I will make that motion to change it to Highway District from the Boston Providence Highway District.
So change the, and, and you know, this gets back to the question of sometimes the difficulty, I think, of doing this on the fly. But, uh, Mr. Halkiotis, if we, uh, in, um, Section 3 change the verbiage Boston Providence Highway District to the Highway Business District, would that, um, make sense to you? Would that, would that work, just in terms of the plumbing of how it's set up?
As Mr. DeShanes indicated, the Article 12 included certain, um, design standards for how and the placement of open lots, storage, where they would go, um, in relation to the road and what they would look like. If we change Article 13 to, uh, Highway Business Zone, some of those considerations would not come into play. My statements about not being sure what the unintended consequences are are to, to protect myself because, you know, something bad could happen out of this. But it, all in all, I don't think that, that this change would be, um, would be too detrimental. And so I leave it up to the body, having said that, on what they want to do.
So Ms. Haley, your, your motion is to amend the proposed changes in Section 3.0 dealing with open lot parking, change the references to, uh, the Boston Providence Highway District to the reven- res- uh, references to the Highway Business District. Is that correct?
It, it says on the screen, it says 3.1.5, Table of Use.
Yes. What did I say?
3.0.
All right, well, I'd go with the screen.
Yeah, that's, that's my, I, you know...
Is there a second to that motion?
I have no idea.
Mr. Bodenhoffer, second that motion. So, the motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Haley, would you like to be heard on your motion?
Get muted again. No, I, I, I think, I think in the short term, if we, um, if we can make a change to protect ourselves from now until the fall, when hopefully we get back to this again, then it's, it's, hopefully will work to protect more of our, our, um, overstressed zoning laws, um, for a short term. And when we get together in the fall, we'll be able to put this with the other Article 12 and straighten the whole mess out.
All right, we have, um, uh, Mr. Hearn, who wants to be heard for the next.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I hope you can hear me. And, uh, Christian, can I be heard? We're using a joint microphone.
Um, we can hear you, but you're coming through, um, the moderators.
Yeah, we've got one microphone on the table that we're trying to...
Okay, great, yeah, we can hear you.
You know, it, we heard at the beginning of this discussion that the, um, and I'm speaking, uh, for myself on this as a resident and business owner in the town, but I have a fair degree of experience with respect to these topics. Um, and I'm very disappointed as a resident and business owner that we're not moving forward on Article 12 at this time. And I hope we will at some point sooner than the fall because people have been waiting for this for a long time. It should have been taken up last spring, it certainly could have been taken up in the, um, uh, we wanted to take it up in November, we had to delay it till now. All of this has been discussed by the planning board with, uh, meetings to which people have been invited, including town meeting members, and I thought there was plenty of discussion. But the body wants to send it back, and that's, that's fine. But on the open lot storage issue, um, I mean, I, I think that, you know, that Mr. DeShane made a very good point that, um, without the well-thought-out, um, regulations that were incorporated in the Boston Providence Highway District proposal, we may find that we have a situation with, um, open lot storage that is going to be put in the Highway Business District without the regulations, um, that will become permanent. Because when that happens, even if, and I hope it's when, we adopt a, some version of what was Article 12, those regulations will not apply to existing open lot storage spaces. So sometimes you've got to look at it, the devil you know is better than the devil you don't know. There's a lot of complaining about open lot storage, and it's only allowed in the manufacturing district. I'm not sure there's anything left in the manufacturing district other than on Route 1, where somebody could reasonably put an open lot storage, uh, space. But it is only allowed right now under the manufacturing district, and that would be effective if no affirmative action were taken on the current proposal. If you vote for Highway Business District and somebody starts putting an open lot storage there without the regulation of the, uh, proposed Boston Providence Highway District, we might end up with something we didn't want. And we may not have the protections that, uh, we would want. I do question, I, I have some concern, and I'm not sure whether Mr. DeLuca definitively, uh, opined on this. I may have missed it, but whether this is outside of the scope of the warrant. Because what everybody was given notice about was that there was going to be, if there was a Boston Providence Highway District, this is what we were going to do. So I leave it to the body, but I urge people to be careful about voting for something where we really don't know what we're going to get. At least we know what the rules are with respect to manufacturing. I really don't know where there's any manufacturing lots that could be used. They've pretty much been used for open lot storage or for other uses allowed in that district. So I think we ought to think about that. Without the protections that the Planning Board and its consultants had worked on, we might end up with something we simply would regret later on. And once you give it, it can't be taken back. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
And just, Mr. DeLuca indicated that because the Highway Business District is contained in the Boston Providence District, it'd be considered a narrowing of the motion before within the, within the scope.
I thank you, and that's my comments. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McFarlane.
Pete McFarlane, District 3. I'm kind of confused. Can we, would putting a moratorium on open lot storage until December 31st, 2021 be appropriate for, you know, for this?
That would be outside the scope.
Outside the scope?
Of the, of the.
But, okay, as far as that goes, then I, that'll do for what I have to say. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Plasko.
Bill Plasko, District 1, panelists.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'm having trouble hearing you. Did you call on Bill Plasko, District 1?
I did.
Thank you, sir. I move the question.
All right. Is there a second? Is there a second? I'm moving the question. There is. Ms. Nomi, some questions been moved. So all those in favor of moving the question, please lower the hands. So this is the amendment proposing to change the scope from the Boston Providence Highway District to the Highway Business for the Section 3 dealing with open lot parking. So all those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. And that is 107. Well, I'll give, I'll give five more seconds. 117 in favor of moving the, moving the question. Please lower the hands. Yes. We can lower the hands, please. All those opposed to moving the question, please raise your hand. I'll give it five seconds. All right, we'll close it. 29 opposed, so the motion is closed. So this is a vote on the motion, and there was a point of order raised. A motion can be amended by a vote of the body. That's what we're doing right now, is taking a vote of the body. This is not a friendly amendment to the original motion. It's a, it's a substitute motion. So we're going to move forward on the motion to amend, as we discussed, changing the scope from Boston Providence Highway to Highway Business District. So that's the motion. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Give it 10 more seconds. Close the vote at 74 in favor. Lower the hands, please. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your. We'll give that 10 more seconds. Close the vote, 68. Now the panelists. Oh, I'm sorry. Pointing the panelists. Are one, so that's 69. So 74 yes, 69 no, the motion carries. So that's Article 13. That's correct. That was the motion to amend Article 13. So that now replaces the, the main motion. And so the motion that is now on the table is the motion to amend the language of the section as we previously discussed, which is a planning, a motion which would require two-thirds vote. So, Ms. Donnie.
My, my point of raising my hand before was a point of order. It's already gone by. Thank you. I'm all set.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Joe Greeley, District 6. Although I am in favor of the concept of changing this and at least protecting further expansion of open lot storage. I don't, I'm not in the planning department. I'm not on the planning board. Luckily, I guess sometimes I do defer to their opinion. I think by taking Article 12 off the table, going back to the original discussion, I think, taking an Article 12 off the table, we do run the risk, as Mr. Halkiotis mentioned, of introducing unforeseen and unwelcome changes in any of these articles. Further down the road, in addition to parking, is also, there, there's another article about parking structures, all of which could be related to open, open lot storage. So I hesitate to go with this change to Highway, the Highway District. I would recommend that we do not make this change, and I would recommend that we, likewise, similar to Article 12, I would recommend that we table this, refer it back to the, to the Planning Board. One comment I would make, however, a couple of people have mentioned allowing this to go until the fall, or even one person mentioned leaving it open until December. I think even at the risk of carving out open space, open lot storage, I should say, open lot storage, I do think that the Planning Board should consider this topic above all else, because I think the other aspects of the Route 1 changes, such as housing and multi-lot, I'm sorry, multi-use, changing zoning to multi-use, I think those are going to require more time and they're more complex than this topic. I would recommend to the Planning Board that, if at all possible, that they carve out anything related to open lot storage and treat that as kind of the eight, eight items or less, and try to fast-track that if at all possible, and bring that specific topic along with anything related to that topic back to the, back to town meeting in May at the annual town meeting. So I'm opposed to this current article. I would challenge and recommend to the Planning Board that they introduce the open, open lot storage in May at the annual town meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Ms. Nomi.
Kelly Nomi, District 5. I'd like to move the question.
All right. So the question's been moved. This is a vote on the amendment to Article 13. The amendment is to adopt with the changing of the description of the zone. From the Boston. Is there a second to moving the question? Mr. Collin Maria, seconds, moving the question. So we're, we're moving the question on the amendment to Article 13. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. We'll give it 10 seconds. We'll close the vote at 110 yes. Please take the yeses down. Are the hands down? All those opposed to moving the question, please raise. Give it 10 more seconds. We'll close, close the vote. It's now 26 no's, so the question, motion has been moved. Yeah, the, the motion that's before us now is the motion to amend the motion. Rather than refer it to the Planning Board for further study, change the language of the motion to replace the reference to the Boston Providence Highway to the Highway Business District, and with that change, adopt the motion. So that's, that's the motion, rather than refer it, adopt it as amended. So that's the motion that's now before the meeting. All those in favor of that, of that motion, it's a two-thirds vote, it's a zoning bylaw change, all those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. We'll give it 10 more seconds. We'll close the vote at 61 yes. Just lower the hands. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. We'll give it 10 more seconds. Close the vote at 78. The motion fails. 79. I keep forgetting to count the panelists. 79. So the motion fails. So we're back to the main motion on Article 13, which is to refer Article 13 to. I mean, so I believe the motion fails. Mr. DeLuca, let me, let me ask you, do we go back, the, the motion was amended and failed. Do we go back to the original motion, or is that simply the end of the motion?
No, we're, we're, as I read this, we're, we're back to the, the first requested amendment to Article 13, which is, was a motion to refer to the Planning Board.
Yeah, that's, that, I, I, that makes sense to me. So that's what we're on now. Article 13 is a motion to refer it to the Planning Board. And any, simple majority vote. Ms. Churchill, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, Rachel Churchill, District 5. As I understand it, the motion before us is to refer the refer this article to the Planning Board, and if I'm understanding that correctly, move the question.
No, the, the, right now, the, the, the motion is to refer it to the Planning Board. If somebody wanted to move the motion, the question, they could.
Move the motion.
Yeah, you, you can't though, because you've already spoke.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Donnie.
Move the question.
Is there a second to moving the question? Ms. Roffey seconded. So the, on moving the question, all those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. We'll give it 10 more seconds. We'll close the vote, yes, at 118. Please lower the hands. All those opposed to moving the question, please raise. Give it 10 seconds. For opposed, the motion carries. So the question has been moved. The question that's now before the meeting is motion to refer Article 13 to the Planning Board for further study. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. We'll give that 10 more seconds. We'll close the vote, yes, 130, 129 participants and one panelist. Please lower the hands. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. Give that 10 seconds. Five opposed, the motion carries. Move on to Article 14. This is a, a Planning Board motion is the report from Mr. Porro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Number, Article 14, Amendment to the Zoning Bylaw, Section 7.3, Drive-Thru Window in Section 3 Table of Use Regulations. The Planning Board held a public hearing on January 25th, 2021, to accept public comments on the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the drive-through windows. No members of the public attended the virtual public hearing. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the article at town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Porro. Is there a motion from Mr. Pachakos?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 14, recommended by the Planning Board that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 7.3, Drive-Thru Windows, and Section 3 Table of Use Regulations, as set forth in the warrant.
And Mr. Halkiotis, you have a presentation on this motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do. Christian, would you be so kind as to let me share my screen?
Christian, would you be so kind as to let me share my screen?
You should be good to share.
Article 14 proposes to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 7.3 that regulates drive-through windows, and the Table of Use Regulations, Section 3.15. Section 3.1.5, the Table of Use Regulations, allows drive-throughs in all of the commercial zoning districts with the exceptions of the General Business District. The General Business District is one of our largest districts of all of the commercial zones. As we all know, drive-throughs are convenient, they're fast, and they're popular. Right now, they are allowed by special permit from the planning board in the manufacturing district, the planned mixed-use development district, the limited manufacturing district, the highway business district. However, they, they outlawed in the general business district. And this article would allow for that. It would change Section 7.321 to make it clear that only one drive-through ordering window and one pickup window are allowed per building. This amendment to the bylaw will, this will make that section of the bylaw clearer as it was confusing as currently written. The change to Section 7.3.2, number seven, makes it a requirement to add an escape lane or a bailout lane to any drive-throughs that are applied for in the future. This would allow people to leave a, a drive-through lane if they change their mind or need to leave, or it's, it's taking too much time. A design requirement of an escape lane will allow for that. Currently, our bylaw doesn't require that. This article's been erected, recommended for approval by the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Halkiotis. This, there are no registered speakers. If you could, Christian, get it back to the screen with the participants. Ms. Doyle.
Hi, Cheryl Doyle, District Seven. Mr. Moderator, through you to Mr. Halkiotis. How does this impact the the drive-through lane that's over by Yankee Spirit that was approved by the planning board, but is not in operation? It's the building that just sets empty and that's wrapped? Does that have an impact on that? Or can that just stay as a drive-through with no escape lane?
Mr. Halkiotis?
The planning board did not approve a special permit for the drive-through lane for the building across from Yankee Spirits. The owner of the property appealed the planning board's denial to District Court. We have worked with the applicant's design engineer and brought in a peer review consultant to take a look at those plans. And the plans for the drive-through for that property have a new design which addresses the concerns that the planning board had when they denied it. Subsequent to this, it has been remanded back to the planning board to reconsider this particular application. We have received plans and scheduled a public hearing for, I believe, March 8th to take this matter back up that has been remanded from the courts back to the planning board. Since this is a, a legal question on how this zoning article will impact that particular application remanded back to the planning board, I'd like to seek the advice of counsel to have him advise me on which set of rules they will need to follow.
Mr. DeLuca, are you comfortable addressing that question?
Yes. Yeah, yes, I, I have been working with the planning board on, on this matter of litigation. And it is litigation that remains in the jurisdiction of the Superior Court. And therefore would be following the existing bylaw and not the proposed new bylaw.
So the proposed new bylaw would have no effect on that litigation?
That's correct.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle, anything further?
No. I just want to thank Mr. Halkiotis for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Hall, District Six. I would appreciate some clarification of what the rule regarding escape lanes is supposed to permit. I have in mind a McDonald's and a Dunkin' Donuts that are just across the line into Walpole on Route One and are very close to my house. In the McDonald's case, you have a lane that has a ordering microphone, an ordering window, and a pickup window. And once you got past the ordering microphone, you can't escape. And I don't think you'd want them to be able to because if they put an order in, you don't want them leaving before they've paid for it or picked it up. In the taste of Dunkin' Donuts, they have an ordering microphone and a pickup window, but no ordering window. So if you could just clarify how this is supposed to work and at what points you're supposed to be able to escape, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Halkiotis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That's a good question. Right now, we have no design requirements for an escape lane. I would, and the bylaw is not specific on where the escape lane would need to begin or end in relationship to the ordering or pickup windows. What it, what it simply means is that it has to allow somebody that wants entering the drive-through lane to exit. And, and in my mind, what I'm thinking is there would be no islands or no curbing or barriers that would prevent a vehicle from leaving the drive-through lane once they had entered. The bylaw's silent on, on where that would begin or end. So I would read that as it's a requirement that there be a paint on pavement to keep the vehicles in the drive-through lane, but no barriers that would prevent them from exiting that drive-through lane.
Thank you, Mr. Halkiotis, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, I, I'm having trouble interpreting that as an answer to my specific examples because it sounds like you're, you are going to require them to permit vehicles to leave after they placed an order, but before they paid for it or, and/or before they picked it up.
Mr. Halkiotis, is it, is it correct that the, the proposed bylaw doesn't really specify which of those options are going to be required?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, that's correct. The bylaw does not specify at what points an escape lane would need to begin or end. It just requires that one exist.
Mr. Hall?
Yeah, well, that, it's good to have the flexibility. But I would encourage the folks in charge of this to take a look at some of the drive-through lanes within or adjacent to our town and perhaps discover that in order for the escape lane to serve the public and serve the store, it's going to take a bit more thought about what's allowed, what's required and such.
Mr. Deschand, do you have something you want to add on this?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment to, to Mr. Hall's point. With, with Section 7.3 being a special permit, the design would go both through site plan review and through the special permit process. So the planning board would need to dictate whether or not this special, proposed drive-through meets the requirements of special, of 10.4. So both the location of where a certain bailout lane begins or ends would be part of the site plan review process as well. So while it's not specific within the bylaw itself, usually these things are, are dealt with both through site plan review as well as internal department meetings whenever we get a new project proposal that involves a special permit or site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, anything further?
Just if, to see whether I've interpreted what I've heard correctly, all you're really requiring is there has to be an escape lane. Every other detail is to be negotiated between the parties who are assumed to be reasonable and, in this matter.
Mr. Moderator?
Question or a statement?
It's a statement with a question mark at the end of it to see if.
All right, Mr. Halkiotis, you want to address that?
Thank you. As Mr. Deschand's mentioned, it is required by special permit. And as part of that special permit process, we do review each application on a case-by-case basis. And those projects are referred to the town engineer and the police safety officer. That's also a requirement that's currently in the bylaw. So on a case-by-case basis, we would work with the town engineer and the applicant's engineer to come up with a suitable design that, that will help serve the, the public interest and allow people that flexibility to have that option to leave once they enter that, that drive-through lane.
Hall, any further?
No, thank you.
Mr. Kaylee. Kaylee, excuse me.
Jeffrey Kaye moved to question, Jeffrey Kaye, District Seven, moved to question.
There's a second to moving the question. Donnelly seconded. So all those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. We'll give 10 seconds more. Close the vote, 121 yes. All those opposed, please lower the hands. All those opposed to moving the question, please raise your hand. To oppose, the motion's been moved. So we move to the motion pursuant to Article 14 to amend zoning bylaw, Section 7.3 for drive-through windows. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. We'll give that 10 seconds. We'll close the vote, 121. All those, please lower the hands. I keep forgetting to lower the hands. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. We'll give that 10 seconds. Close the vote, seven opposed. Motion carries by more than two thirds. Move to Article 15. This is a motion by Mr. Plasko.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Be it voted that the town, by and through the Board of Selectmen, petition the Massachusetts Legislature to amend or supplement Chapter 44 of the Acts of 2016, which authorized the town to issue a total of four new licenses for the sale of wines and malt beverages to be drunk on the premises in the South Norwood General Business District as defined by said Chapter 44, so as to expand the coverage of said South Norwood General Business District to include the premises at 83 Moore Street, commonly known as the Norwood Space Center.
And, Mr. Plasko, do you want to be heard on this motion?
If I might briefly, Mr. Moderator. This was brought to our attention by Mr. Dupree on behalf of 83 Moore Street, LLC. For those who may not be aware, that was the old former Burden Sun Linoleum Plant. Was quite blighted and disused. Factory buildings, they have spent close to $12 million turning it into a very positive business location. And they think this can help them to do even a better job in expanding that location and increasing our tax rate basis. So with that, with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. David Hearn, who I believe represents, somehow has something to say further on the matter.
Recognize Mr. Hearn?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Plasko and town meeting members. Good evening. I am here speaking to this matter this evening as an attorney who has represented the owners of Norwood Space Center on various matters before the planning board and the zoning board. Just to give you a little background, the Norwood Space Center, as Mr. Plasko mentioned, was a factory that had fallen out of use and was a bit of a wreck when Mr. David Dupree and his group purchased the property and started to clean it up. They cleaned up the buildings. They made them ready for occupancy. They also cleaned up the exterior areas, created a parking area with 216 parking spaces and they have room for more if more are needed. They cleaned up the, the section of the Nippon City River that borders on their property. And they have turned this disused area into a bustling site with different types of businesses. There is an event, venue there, Little Bird Events. There is a small brewery that has a place of business there. There are the Salvage Angel Vintage Market, which had been over at Endicott Street. And you know, many of you know, that has been closed because of problems after a fire has moved over there. There are individual workstations and studios. There is a fitness center. There is a storage unit, planet storage on the Norwood Space Center site. So what Mr. Dupree has done, and he's the on, hands-on manager of this, is to bring life to this site and bring business there and bring opportunities there. There is a lease recently signed that will bring Luke Adams Glass Studio from its present location at Lennox Street to the Norwood Space Center. They manufacture glass items, gifts and decorations, decorative matters. They also do manufacture jewelry. They sell retail, they sell wholesale, these matters. And Mr. Adams also has an idea of doing further development there that would include some small, a small food court. Now, what these businesses want, another business there is the Magic Room, which is an event, music event venue. And they are hoping to get a beer and wine license or a full alcohol license. They were not successful recently because there was some competition for that before the Board of Selectmen. And they've been shut down because of the Commonwealth orders relating to the pandemic. But the, one of the issues that people have in developing property for different types of uses that cater to the public is the lack of alcohol licenses that are available in the town. You may remember that in November of 2014, Town Meeting voted to petition the legislature for four beer and wine licenses to be authorized, to be awarded by the selectmen, the businesses within the South Norwood Business District as that district, not so much a zoning district, but as that district was defined in the South Norwood Vision Plan and Action Strategy that had been commissioned by the town and was put together by a committee of residents and property owners and business leaders who were particularly involved with South Norwood. And that particular study defined the South Norwood Business District as running from Long Washington Street from Short Street to Lennox Street. In two, that was, the study was done in 2003. And it encouraged improvements to buildings in the South Norwood area to upgrade residential and commercial structures to renovate or redevelop underutilized properties. Norwood Space Center is an example of that. They also recommended the fostering of a public and private partnership. And the Norwood Space Center has worked very closely with the different boards in the town, the selectmen. Selectmen, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Conservation Commission, the Town Planner and the Town Manager, to bring improvements in design and environmental conditions at this site. The study, the 2003 Vision Plan study, recommended the provision of more parking for businesses. Norwood Space Center has done that with 216 spaces and room for more if needed. Also, the recommendation was made in the study to improve the mix of service, retail, and restaurant businesses that serve the South Norwood neighborhood. That is exactly what the Norwood Space Center has been doing over the last few years, bringing in different types of businesses, opportunities for people who need office space or studio space, opportunities for employment, opportunities for people to come and take part in events. And they have been doing that, but they run into a little bit of a problem in that there, as I said, there aren't enough of these alcohol licenses available, and that's what helps these businesses to thrive, whether in South Norwood or downtown Norwood. You may remember, a number of years ago, there were, there was a class of licenses created for the downtown, which allowed some businesses that previously couldn't serve beer or wine the opportunity to get licenses. That was done for South Norwood. Unfortunately, while four were authorized, four licenses were authorized, only one has been used. That's the one that Minus Cafe has had since 2016. When we took this matter up in November of 2014, the Norwood Space Center wasn't on anybody's radar. It hadn't been redeveloped. I'm not even sure it had been purchased at that point. And so the idea of including it in the South Norwood Business District really didn't cross anybody's mind. But in the time since Town Meeting voted for that and the legislature approved it early in 2016, the South, the Norwood Space Center has become a very interesting, eclectic, happening place. And they would like to be able to apply for some of those licenses that are going unused right now, the three remaining licenses. Not that they want all of them, but they just want the opportunity to apply just as any other business in the area might, within the South Norwood area. So what we're asking for is for the Town Meeting to authorize and direct the Selectmen to petition the legislature to allow for a change of the law that was passed as Chapter 44 of the Acts of 2016, and to expand the area covered by this defined South Norwood Business District to include the property known as the Norwood Space Center at 83 Moore Street. That's what we're asking for. It doesn't guarantee to get the licenses, but it allows them to play the game, to have an opportunity to apply for the licenses. And there hasn't been a great demand for them along Washington Street. As I said, only Minus Cafe has applied for one and was awarded one back in 2016. Those, we sent a letter to the Town Meeting members that I think you all got about a week ago, which lays out much of what I'm saying, but to try to educate people on this. Dave Dupree, who was one of the principals of the company that owns the property and who has been the onsite manager and chief developer of the site, is about to address you, and he's next in line as a registered speaker. He can tell you really what has gone on, what they've done, what they hope to do, why this is important. So we ask you to vote favorably on this request when we do get to a vote. He'll tell you, Mr. Dupree will tell you who uses the South Norwood, the Norwood Space Center, and who, where they come from, and who the patrons are, who the businesses are. He can tell you that in much greater detail than I can. So, Mr. Moderator, thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, Town Meeting members. And those extent of my remarks, we're certainly happy to answer questions as they may come up. But Mr. Dupree has said we'll hopefully answer many of your questions.
All right. As the current indicator, our next registered speaker is Mr. Dupree.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and Mr. Hearn. Not sure how to follow Mr. Hearn's lead. I think he's pretty much summed it all up. I think, I would just like to add to that, that our goal when acquiring the property in 2016 was not necessarily to create another suburban office park, but to create something unique and different that people would really enjoy coming to. And the concept is to create a fun place to work and play, is what we call it. Mr. Hal Kiotis had used a similar term earlier. The idea is that we create multiple types of spaces that will cater to the various different needs of the businesses that are in Norwood, the surrounding community, and want to come to Norwood. And so what we've done is worked heavily on creating the fun workplace. And by the grace of God, we're well underway in creating that fun place to work, and we've provided many entrepreneurial residents of Norwood and the surrounding communities small, affordable spaces that allowed them to leave their basements, their garages, and move into a new professional space to grow their business. We also have our larger office and commercial and industrial tenants. You see them along the fronts of the property with entrances out onto the parking lot. And those, in fact, have created jobs, you know, that have been made available to the South Norwood area, as well as the, you know, Norwood area and surrounding community. And then all of these different tenants, totaling approximately 100 different tenants now that are at the property, given all the various small spaces, now visit South Norwood. They go to South Norwood, they buy food, they buy lunch, they buy merchandise, and they buy services. So at the same time, we're trying to help the South Norwood District revitalize itself. I've read the study back in 2004, I believe it was, and bringing this kind of work environment, businesses, employees, et cetera, will significantly help that and continue to help improve that area. What we're trying to do now is focus more on the fun place to play. So you can work and play, is kind of the idea. And the play spaces that we have are what I would call, say, Percival Brewery Company, which was one of our earliest tenants, and they've struggled to survive the collapse of the craft brewing industry by expanding the taproom business. And they offer food and some of the best roasted coffee I've ever tasted. If you haven't done so, I suggest you go down there. During COVID-19, they are still open, and we welcome you to come and visit them. You can get beer or coffee, both then sit down and takeout. Angela Marenghi, also a Norwood resident, pretty much risked everything to build and open Little Bird Events. It's probably one of the most beautiful spaces I've ever seen. Now, you can hold your company gathering there, your private party, your bridal shower, and more. She's pivoted during COVID-19 by expanding her operation with a restaurant takeout and outdoor seating in our new courtyard. Angela's helped us plan and hold many of our community events and will resume so in spring 2021, and she continues to be open for business and as a Norwood business could use your support and your help. We also have Prosperity Health and Fitness, who relocated from Route One, Providence Highway. They offered an 8,000-square-foot fitness facility with CrossFit, spin classes, yoga, traditional personal training, et cetera. So he also adds to that play factor at the Norwood Space Center. And as David mentioned, one of our most recent tenants is Luke Adams Glass Blowing Studio. He's an existing Norwood business. He's on Lennox Street. Many of you may know him. He's, has a glasswork and jewelry production studio. He will move that to the Norwood Space Center, along with his classes for learning how to do glassblowing, retail store, and he too would like to serve beer and wine and food to his customers. And as David mentioned, there are no beer and wine licenses in Norwood. So the logical ask is to see if we could be included in that district to have available to our tenants, not necessarily in Norwood Space Center, but our tenants at the Norwood Space Center, the option to go and apply for those licenses with the Board of Selectmen. By, from what I understand, by voting on this, they're not...
You have a minute left, just to give you...
From what I understand, they're not deemed to receive these licenses. This is still a public process, an open competitive process, and they would have to go to the Board of Selectmen to apply for it and receive a license. We're just asking that they have a chance to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree. Mr. Nemusco.
Hi, Michael Nemusco, District Six. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I don't, well, I had actually got the letter from Mr. Dupree and actually called him up and spoke to him about it. I'm really just not opposed to business development in the area. However, this area needs a lot of work. I'm surprised that remodeling the area didn't include something like that. What I'm talking about is the bridges on Moore Street, Short Street. They have one bridge which is dark, unlit, and there's probably every month of vehicles hitting the bridge. I have another foot, another bridge that you over, and there's a sidewalk on it, and so close and so tight, the cars are pinching the curb every couple of weeks. That's a problem. Traffic is a problem in that area, and something needs to be done about that. I spoke to Mr. Dupree, and he even offered up and made suggestions like, let's put the sidewalk on the other side of the bridge, so we have more, more space on the bridge. So you're adding 214 or 15 car spaces with more traffic over there. I already spoke to him about the storage light and said the light's so bright that people going underneath the bridge, look, don't see the little flashing light, they see the storage light. And he's been nice enough, I noticed recently, that he turned the light off at nighttime. I couldn't understand why his storage light needed to be on 24 hours a day. What also helps starting up is on the other side with, you know, open lock storage in the carpots, there's going to be a delivery parts station over there, which is going to add more traffic, and there'll be some small trucks driving over the bridge again. So we talked about the bridge. The bridge is a sore subject. I really think the bridge needs to be fixed. Need to do something, seek it out, get it straightened out. The street's a mess. It floods. You notice all the Jersey barriers in front of the building? That's because the water from the street didn't drain right, and all emptied into Mr. Dupree's building. It all moved into that building, and he had to put Jersey barriers there, which are not very pleasant for the eye, which maybe we could do something to help him out there. There was talk about putting a light on Washington Street to help out. I mean, I live on Short Street, and there are many times I cannot get out of my driveway. Usually it's in the morning or when school traffic comes down the street, or later on when people are going to school. It is the middle school on the other end, and everyone travels through that cut-through street. You know, the walking paths on that street need to have sidewalks, so it's safer for people. I think until those problems are addressed, I don't really see any more business developed in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Nemusco. Mr. Kaylee. Excuse me, Mr. Kylie.
Jeffrey Kay, District Seven, moved to question.
Question has been moved. We could lower the hands. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. Give it 10 more seconds. Close the votes, 121 yes. Please lower the hands. All those opposed, please raise. Give it 10 seconds. Close the vote, 17 opposed. Motion has been moved. Now we move consideration of the motion. This is the motion under Article 15. As it appears on the screen, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. We'll give it 10 more seconds. We'll close the vote. There's 137 attendees and four panelists, for a total of 141 yes. Please lower the hands. All those opposed, please raise your hand. We'll give it 10 more seconds. All right, we'll close the vote. Seven opposed. Motion carries. With that, my work for the evening is done, although given what happened to Article 12, it may not be the last time you see me, I suspect, but we'll deal with that when it happens. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, folks. We, I'm back. My thanks to Mike Riley for standing in on those matters, and we move on now to Article 16. And this is a zoning matter, so we will take a rec, a report from the Planning Board. Mr. Poro?
I'll set, David.
Your report on Article 16, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 16, Amendment to the Zoning Bylaw to Create a New Medical Services Overlay Zoning District. Planning Board held a public hearing on January 25, 2021, to accept public comments on the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to create a new medical services overlay zoning district and amend the official zoning map. No members of the public attended the virtual public hearing. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the article at Town Meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Poro. And we have a motion. Ms. Pechkovsky, are you going to make the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 16, recommended by the Planning Board that the town amend the zoning bylaw by inserting a new Section 9.9, Medical Services Overlay District. Thank you.
All right. That motion, I have it in writing, seconded by Mr. Shan. All right. So we have, I have a couple of registered speakers on this. By the way, Mr. Hal Kiotis, you want to make a presentation on this, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
You go first, then.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank you, the moderator pro temp, Mr. Riley. He did a good job of navigating through some complicated motions. Article 16, I have a presentation. Christian, could I share my screen, please?
You should be good to go.
Thank you. Article 16 proposes to amend the zoning bylaw. We are proposing this in the wake of the major flooding that took place on June 28. The current zoning allows Norwood Hospital to be rebuilt within the existing footprint. However, the future redevelopment or the expansion could be problematic due to our existing zoning restrictions in that area. The hospital currently doesn't comply with the zoning height regulations in the general business district. That's where the property is located currently. The maximum building height is 30 feet. The existing hospital is approximately 55 feet. Over the years, the hospital was required to seek variances and special permits from the zoning board. The proposed zoning bylaw is specifically for the hospital and its supporting medical-related uses. Many other communities with hospitals have medical service overlay districts. Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center in Needham is one example. The second example is Susha Hospital in Weymouth. This article proposes to create a new section of the zoning bylaw, Section 9.9, the Medical Services Overlay District. It will also amend the official zoning map by creating that overlay district and showing it on the map. Here is a zoom in to the area where the proposed overlay district is located. As you can see here, the overlay district encompasses the primary block where the hospital is currently located, a block... a block behind it and uh, across East Hoyle Street to encompass, I think, two or three other parcels there. Modern hospital complexes usually have some unique things. They usually have buildings that are taller than thirty feet. Most often they have parking garages, heliports, interconnected buildings, and things like ambulance receiving areas that are very unique to that specific use. Most hospitals are surrounded by other supporting services. Doctor's office, rehab centers, imaging facilities, pharmacies, medical supply and equipment stores, and even support services like banks and restaurants. Medical service overlay district will allow to permit development, renovation, relocation of medical and healthcare facilities and services convol, uh, convenient to both the town and the region. It will provide for the healthcare needs of the community and the region within a hospital and customary supporting s- facilities. Will create an environment conducive to medical practice and operations in a complex or a campus type setting. It will, through uh, regulations and special permits issued by the Planning Board, maintain the scale and ensure compatibility between the uses within the medical services overlay district and the abutting districts. It will allow for a parking garage. It will allow for, within the district, buildings up to forty-five feet in height, with the exception of a primary hospital building, which is allowed to be up to eighty feet in height. It will also allow for a heliport, there's one there now. Activities associated with the medical services overlay district. It will provide for and maintain protection, those neighboring properties. There'll be convenient and safe access for vehicles and pedestrian movement within the district. The Planning Board would be designated as a special permit granting authority within the medical services overlay district. This article has been recommended for approval by both the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Halkeotos. Um, I have some registered speakers on this. Uh, start with uh, Ann Haley. Ms. Haley? Ms. Haley, you can, uh, there you go.
Sorry, it, it gets buried under a black line, so I can't push on the unmute button. I apologize. I'm going to pass on this. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mrs. Esco is next on my list. Mrs. Esco.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mrs. Esco, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Internet Esco, District Five. Um, first, I'd like to thank the Planning Board for all their work. There's a lot of bylaws tonight. Um, I'm grateful that the town is trying to cooperate with Stuart Healthcare to restore Norwood Hospital. I'm a strong supporter of the healthcare system and have had the necessity to use their services a variety of times. That being said, I, I would like to express some concerns about this district. First, I'm, I'm discouraged that Norwood officials were uh, advocated to secrecy regarding their last substantial conversation with hospital officials. I have no idea what Stuart Healthcare's future hopeful business plans are, and I'm not sure if this medical services overlay district is even a sufficient solution to their financial dilemma to rebuild. I'm disappointed that no one from Norwood Hospital has addressed the local community publicly in some time. Secondly, the medical services overlay district bylaw seems overwhelming to me for the streets outlined on the map with its allowance for a precedent-setting eighty-foot-high building and a variety of other building build-outs that are fifty percent higher than what's currently allowed, going from thirty to forty-five feet high plus parking garages. The bylaw has a huge impact on the adjacent neighborhoods in terms of a variety of vehicle traffic, including increased cars, helicopter traffic, ambulance traffic and noise, as well as the increased employees, visitors and medical staff associated with an eighty-foot hospital with six stories. Thirdly, what if it ends up being financially better for Stuart to sell their properties and for Norwood Hospital to move to another town with more space to build out? Stuart, according to the Assessors Office, owns Stuart Healthcare Trust, owns eight hundred Washington Street, fifty-two Guile Street, two hundred Broadway, and an unnumbered property on East Hoyle Street. Lastly, in the town's zealous efforts to cooperate with Norwood Hospital, we are, in my view, prematurely creating a complex area without sufficiently studying its impact on the nearby neighborhood, much like in Article Twelve. The Planning Department normally does many months of thorough research before it promotes a new overlay district, such as with Boston Province Highway, the multi-use overlay district and such. I understand the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager wanted to put pressure on the Planning Department to expedite this bylaw, which really was done last summer after the flood happened because there were the hopes of bringing the bylaw to town meeting in October, but that didn't happen as it got canceled. I do understand why the town was pressing the Planning Department because we all want to encourage the hospital to stay. My questions are, uh, were the nearby residents of the streets and neighborhood notified of this bylaw? Winter, Barn, Broadway, Park Street, East Hoyle? It bothers me that in the era of COVID with all the remote and virtual meetings required, that no one's, you know, no one's coming into the virtual meetings. I think if things were in person, you might have seen people come to a public hearing. Um, also, if later in the process Norwood Hospital decides it needs more than an eighty-foot-high building, has the Planning Board and the town determined what that response would be? If hospital officials decide not to rebuild the hospital, what would we do with this bylaw if it was passed? Would we encourage another medical institution to come to Norwood? Thank you very much. Those are my questions and concerns.
Thank you, Mrs. Esco. Uh, Mr. Halkeotos, could, are you, do you want to, or somebody um, connected with the matter wish to respond briefly to Mrs. Esco's questions?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, with respect to building height, i- i- it is uh, the height that the hospital officials indicated to us they would need um, if they were to rebuild. Uh, upon uh, further questions to the Town Manager and the Board, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen regarding the hospital's response to this overlay district, I was told last week that uh, the hospital did respond to questions from them about the overlay district and they didn't raise any issues, indicated that it was similar to what is, is in other communities. So we, we did finally get a response from them and they had no objections to the draft bylaw amendment. My concern about lowering the, the height to the building, and, and I should explain that similar to what we have in the mixed-use overlay district, there is a setback requirement or a step-back requirement that would require that the, the maximum building height of eighty feet be set back um, a substantial distance from the roadway so that we wouldn't see that kind of canyon effect right up against the street. Since Stuart Hospital is a for-profit corporation, I have some concerns that if we were to take measures that would uh, lower the height of the building, that that could affect the hospital's decision of whether or not to rebuild. This is an overlay district and as I mentioned, the, the current zoning district is general business and we're not proposing to change that. So in the event that the hospital chose not to uh, rebuild or to move out of town, um, we would still have a general business zone there and the town, if it so chose to, could go back to town meeting and eliminate the medical services overlay district. This is, this is.
Paul, Mrs. Esco, um, could you mute? Thank you for muting yourself. Thank you. All right, Mr. Mr. Halkeotos.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is, is planning for the future. This is what planning is all about. It's setting the table for future development and in this case, it's an important type of development because as many of you know, at some point in time, you may need medical care from the hospital in the future. And uh, sometimes uh, access to that medical care in a hurry is vitally important. The hospital um, doesn't like uh, limitations that are placed on them through these zoning regulations. They could choose not to redevelop their property in Norwood and that would cause the residents to uh, have to travel further away to get medical treatment. Um, yes, uh, she raised, uh, Ms. Esco raised other concerns about traffic and noise. Those are things that, 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 that happen around hospitals. Um, this particular area, while it's busy, it doesn't experience the same level of traffic um, that some other areas of town do. And we believe that, that the roadway network around it can accommodate the additional growth associated with uh, this bylaw and, and a redeveloped hospital. Um, so I think I've kind of covered most of uh, the concerns that she raised, but I'm here available to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Halkeotos. All right. Mrs. Esco, I just want to make sure you asked a series of questions, I think you would pretty much use your time, but do you have anything further? Any further questions or comments very briefly? Are you all set?
I'm all set, that answered all my concerns. Thank you very much, Mr. Halkeotos.
All right, Mr. Gil.
Tom Gil, District Six. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, sir, to uh, Mr. Halkeotos. I had two concerns, I think you pretty much answered them, but just like to mention them. Uh, my first concern was uh, how much input did the hospital have in creating this uh, district? And secondly, if we didn't do it, what are the chances of the hospital staying in town anyways?
All right, uh, Mr. Halkeotos, can you answer either or both of those questions? Or is there somebody else that might be able to answer some of them?
I see uh, General Manager Mizuko would like to answer this question and I'll defer to him.
All right, uh, Mr. Mizuko.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the members. Um, if we did nothing, the hospital couldn't rebuild the exact way it is. So if they wanted to tear down every building and build it the exact size it is today, the zoning wouldn't comply for it. Remember that the hospital has been there for quite some time and some changes have been made through the zoning over the years. So an exact rebuild of exactly how it is today wouldn't be allowed under the zoning. Uh, to Mr. Gil's question about would the hospital stay if we didn't change the zoning? I don't think they would because without a substantial change to the zoning, they can't build a modern hospital. I will take a moment to explain that the hospital is looking at a total loss and it's probably north of two hundred million dollars. Once a building sustains a certain amount of damage, it has to be completely brought up to code and then the cost of bringing a building up to code ends up exceeding the cost of building new. Hence Stuart is looking at a substantial, substantial insurance complaint, uh, insurance uh, claim. So they're looking to rebuild the hospital. To the question about um, Stuart officials and have they looked at the zoning? When we worked with them over the summer, they looked at it and they looked at models of where they own hospitals throughout the country and a couple dozen other MSODs and similar zoning districts. Most communities, when they have a hospital, they have a hospital-specific zone because hospitals are a little bit unique. Um, I can go further into Stuart's uh, challenges and whatnot, but I think that answers directly um, Mr. Gil's question.
All right, Mr. Gil. Uh, you still have the floor, if you have a follow-up or comments you want to make.
Yeah, just to confirm, so the hospital, uh, Stuart had significant input in what would they would like to see uh, in that district?
They did. Uh, again, a hospital of this nature is, it's a suburban hospital. It's a fairly standard model that's out there. It's not going to be MGH, it's not going to be a little one-story rural hospital.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm, yep.
All right.
That is my question.
Thank you, Mr. Gil. Uh, Mr. Hush, uh, Mr. Plasko, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to add that we did have several conversations with the officials from the hospital. They told us the basic things that they need and they understood that we were working along a general, a guideline that other overlay districts include. And as other speakers said, the overlay district is just that. The underlying district is still there. If the hospital didn't go forward, it does us no harm, it just doesn't become a hospital. The current plans, as have been described to us, well, does not call, look for, uh, looks for new uh, and better, but not larger. Uh, so we don't expect a whole lot more traffic. We do want to encourage the things they need to go forward so that we can get our jobs and taxes back. The hospital has shared with us that they're waiting for this amendment and they'll start their planning once they know the parameters that we've allowed through this zoning and that hopefully by April, they'd be ready to make some type of a major announcement to the town of their future plans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Plasko. Um, next I have Mr. Hajar. You can unmute yourself now, Mr. Hajar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, Mr. Plasko said most of what I was going to say.
Don't forget.
Yeah, yeah, David Hajar from District Four. Uh, Mr. Plasko said, so I won't repeat what he said, uh, all really good news. Um, but I just want to say, I know some, there were some questions, but we're, we're talking, we're talking about a building that is, uh, when we say sixty feet high and it could go up to eighty, but that would include utilities, things that'll go on the roof, such as HVAC systems or if they put a generator up there. It's not actual building, building space, it, it's stuff that would support the building. So, and that's pretty typical in buildings. Um, we had a hospital there before, we had an ambulance service there before. We continue to have doctor's offices there and we had a helicopter space before. So they're not asking for anything that wasn't there previously. So when we talk about additional traffic or additional thi- items, um, that may be true, but the extent of what they're asking for is what they, what they had uh, before destruction. Um, so I, I strongly support this, this is really going to be good for the town, the town needs it. Um, and the hospital is going to come back and once they know that uh, town is voting in favor of this, it's staying, like Mr. Halkeotos said, it's staying ahead of it from a planning perspective. We're not waiting for them to come to us. It was a joint effort to come to, to say, hey, this is what it might take for the hospital to stay, so we need to pass this. Um, and therefore, they're a tax revenue generator. So we, we could use the revenue, so we should be working with them within reason. I don't think anything that's in the proposal is unreasonable. So um, I urge all members to uh, support this. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Um, I'm reminded that we have some folks connected with the hospital staff, as I understand it, who uh, had registered um, to speak and um, uh, also Chief Maurice of the Fire Department. So I'm going to alternate between uh, I, I don't see these folks as panelists, unfortunately, the way the uh, my screen is set up at the moment, but uh, I'm going to call alternately between the uh, town meeting members who have their hands raised and the people who wanted to speak. I'll start with Chief George Maurice of the Fire Department. Marie, uh, Chief, are you here?
I am, thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Maurice, Fire Chief. Uh, I just wanted to give a little background and perspective uh, from the Fire Department. Uh, as we all know, we lost the hospital to circumstances out of our control. Uh, but for Norwood Fire and the Building Department, it meant meeting with hospital representatives for months with the hopes that a standalone emergency department would be possible to restore. Uh, unfortunately, as time went by and the supporting systems were tested, it was found that a standalone emergency department was not feasible and in reality, there was a large amount of damage to the hospital. Uh, with this information, all area fire departments had to understand that our emergency medical services would be altered. For Norwood Fire, this meant operating the way all of our surrounding communities have operated for many years. No longer would we have a five-minute transport time to the emergency room. All members of Norwood Fire were made aware of this by myself and the deputy chiefs. Uh, this has affected our emergency medical services with longer transport times and return times, more wear and tear on the ambulances and increased inter-agency reliance on the mutual aid system. Uh, this makes it challenging for Norwood Fire Department EMTs and paramedics to do their job. Uh, basically, there were many benefits to having a community hospital in town. Uh, due to this situation, I believe that any way the people in Norwood can support Stuart Healthcare in the building of the hospital, I believe they should. I support the rezoning article with the hopes that we can help facilitate the process and ultimately have a new higher care level emergency department and a facility that'll become a flagship regional hospital in Massachusetts. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I'm going to go back to the list of town meeting members, but I would uh, ask as a courtesy that nobody move the question until we've given the folks who've been sitting through these meetings who want to speak to this matter. Uh, some of them are nurses, some of them are other healthcare providers, uh, the opportunity to speak. We only have a few of them. We only have a few of them, but, uh, we can keep the discussion going. I know it's late, but they've waited a long time also to speak. So, Mr. Hall, you're next, and then I'll go back to, uh, one of the, uh, folks registered on the hospital side. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A couple of points for perhaps a larger context. I want to underscore what other speakers have said. Uh, Norwood Hospital, until it was, uh, damaged, was by far the largest employer in Norwood. Several times the employee numbers of whatever was in number two, which tended to vary. So it would be hard to overemphasize how important that is. Uh, secondly, thinking of this on a large scale, what would Norwood like to be known for as its principal industry? When we started, we had things like tanneries, printer shops. We were known throughout, uh, the Northeast, throughout the country for excellence in those kinds of areas. What are our areas of excellence now? My suggestion is we've got the auto mile and the related auto dealerships. That's an area of excellence. We've got a remarkable, uh, suite of restaurants, although they've been severely hit by COVID. And we have an awful lot of medical facilities, not just Norwood Hospital, as well as a premier medical research facility in Moderna. Uh, what I really like about this overlay district is not so much that it solves the problem of an essential employer in Norwood, which we really need to retain, but that it sets the groundwork for what could be a set of connected, interlinked, other medical facilities. Wherever you are in Norwood, if you're a medical facility in Norwood, if you can have some sort of connection, if you will, with the flagship hospital, then we can start to promote Norwood as a place to come one-stop shopping for healthcare. My last point is about the traffic concerns. When my wife and I moved to Norwood 30 years ago, one of the first things we encountered was a spirited argument over whether the Stop &amp; Shop, uh, store would be allowed into the vacated building that was there. Uh, it was, we were in the neighborhood area across Route One. And I went to one of the public hearings and I heard people say, if we allowed this in, this nice little residential area would be experiencing cars driving through during school hours on the order of 60 miles an hour. I knew at the time that that was not only unlikely, but physically impossible, and nothing remotely like that materialized afterwards. There is an old saying that economists have predicted nine of the last five recessions. This is what I think tends to happen here. People always foresee traffic catastrophes. Sometimes they materialize, often they do not. So I would urge people not to go into panic mode every time anything is suggested that is different from what's there now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Uh, there's a point of order that was raised about shouldn't registered speakers speak before town meeting members with their hands raised? And normally that is correct. And I apologize, uh, the, I have registered speakers who send me emails and register. The non-town meeting members were directed to register with the clerk, and while I did have a list of them, I, that wasn't in front of me when we started this, and I apologize. Um, that's why I've asked that we alternate, uh, with these folks. Um, uh, I'm, I'm going to, uh, I have, uh, four more people on the hospital side, uh, three from the hospital and one, I believe, from, uh, uh, Fire Department, uh, to speak. And then we have several from the, uh, town meeting, uh, members who wish to speak, as well as, um, uh, well, Mr. Plasko, we've already called on you once, so we, we're going to defer on you, but, um, if you, um, and there is another gentleman who wasn't, uh, on the list, but I know had registered to be part of it, and I didn't understand he wanted to speak. So I'm going to go back to folks from the hospital, uh, and, uh, whittle that list down a little bit. I may take two of them and then we'll come back to the town meeting members. In fairness, they have been waiting, uh, through hours and hours, as all of us have been working hours and hours. Next on my list, Kathy Reardon. Ms. Reardon, you can unmute yourself if you want to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, uh, yes, my name is Kathy Reardon.
Let me ask you, if the, the non-town meeting members, since you can't, uh, identify yourself by your name and district number, please identify yourself by name and address. And if you have a particular connection with the hospital, I'm sure everybody would like to hear it. Thank you, Ms. Reardon.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Reardon. I live in, uh, Canton, Massachusetts. I am a nurse at Norwood Hospital, which I have been for the last 32 years. I work in the emergency department and I'm here to implore you to pass this article. Norwood Hospital is a vital resource to your, to the citizens of your community, my community, and the 23 communities which we serve. It must be restored as soon as possible to protect the health and safety of the citizens of these communities. Every day this hospital remains closed and no work is done to rebuild puts our patients that we take care of every day, their lives in jeopardy because they have to travel farther and longer for life, critical, critical life-saving treatment. The hospital being closed is also putting a great strain on all of our surrounding fire departments and their resources are being stretched to the max. Please, I implore you to pass this article. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to Paul Ronco, who's on from the hospital of the non-town meeting group, and then I'll go back to the town meeting members. Mr. Ronco, are you there?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please identify yourself.
Uh, Paul Ronco, uh, President of Norwood Fire Fighters Local 1631. Um, just, uh, coming to, uh, support this article. Um, Chief Maurice hit on a, a bunch of topics already. I just wanted to add a little bit more. Um, I think we never really realized how fortunate we were to have a hospital, uh, so close to our residents and also to our Fire Department. Um, since the flood back in June, uh, late June, uh, it has put a tremendous stress on our EMS system. Um, Norwood Hospital had a stroke, uh, stroke center and also has a cath lab. Uh, we no longer have that, so we are traveling. Beth Israel is now the closest stroke center and our closest cardiac cath lab is in Brockton at the Good Samaritan. Um, this is adding double, triple the transport times and turnaround times for us, and it's just, it's put, has a tremendous toll on not only our members, but also the residents that we are serving. Um, since that time, back in July, uh, we've had over 175 out-of-town ambulances that have come to have to transport Norwood residents because our ambulances are tied up. Uh, so just, uh, for those couple instances, uh, I ask you to support this article going forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ronco. All right, Mr. Maloney, I'll go to you next. You can unmute yourself now, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Maloney, District Four, move the question.
Well, you're, you're free to do that. I had asked that, uh, we finish with the hospital people, but okay, is there a second to moving the question? It is a privileged motion, uh, moving the question. There's a second for Mr. Randall in District Three. On moving the question, let's lower the hands, please. All hands to be lowered. All right, all those in favor of moving the question, please say, uh, raise your hand. Give it five more seconds. All right, I call that at, uh, 81 plus one, 82. 81, uh, attendees and a, uh, one, uh, panelist. Now, please, all hands to be lowered and we'll take the no votes on moving the question. Let's, all hands to be lowered. All hands to be lowered, please, until I call for the question, for the vote. All right, all those against, who are voting no, on moving the question, raise your hand, please. I'll give it five more seconds. All right, I call that at 43. The motion has failed. It did not get two-thirds vote. All right, so we return to the speakers. Um, uh, let me go to the people. Anybody who wants to speak among town meeting members, you can raise your hand again, but let me go back to the hospital people that we haven't called on yet. Uh, I'm told Ms. Glavin has left the meeting. Is that correct? I'm informed of that. Then we'll move on now to, uh, Shana Zaman, who is, uh, a panelist, I believe, and please unmute yourself. Is that person still here? Yes, please, um, there you are. Ms. Zaman, if you can unmute yourself and introduce yourself.
This is Shana Zaman. I'm one of the nurses, uh, in Norwood Hospital. I worked there for 26 years since, uh, October 94, in a psych, all over the hospital, but mostly in a psych unit. It's very hard for our nurses. They don't want to go anywhere else. They were very helpful to the community and for our patient. I heard from a lot of neighbors and the patients that they have a difficult time to get the care in the hospital and also go to the psych units because now they have traveled, uh, Good Sam, uh, Carney, or maybe further down. So we really need the hospital to be open as soon as possible. It's, they said that they're temporarily closed since, uh, that, uh, flooding happened in June 29. There is no communication between the store and the nurses. We are still in the air. Are they going to open soon? Are we going to have a job? And especially in this time of situation that they need more nurses to help for vaccination. And this big hospital is closed. It's very unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I had Mr. Simon, but I don't see him now. I don't know if he's left the meeting.
His hand was raised, Mr. Moderator, prior to the move the question vote and lowered in order to do the vote.
I see. Is Mr. Simon here?
I am.
All right, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll be very, very brief. Uh, my name's Dana Simon. Um, I am, uh, one of the directors of the Massachusetts Nurses Association, uh, and, uh, I'm speaking on behalf of the 450 nurses, um, who work at Norwood Hospital, uh, who very much, uh, support the passage of this resolution and, uh, very much look forward to the day that the hospital can be open again so that they can care for the members of the community. Um, I, I think there may be a few other nurses who will be speaking tonight, um, briefly. And I just want to note on their behalf, um, that the urgency that they feel in, uh, getting the hospital reopened is anything but self-serving. They're, they're in tremendous demand. Uh, when the hospital closed, all the surrounding hospitals, uh, snatched up just about all of the, the, the nurses. Uh, their interest tonight in, uh, helping ensure the passage of this, um, is really an interest for the community to get the hospital reopened as soon as possible. So, uh, thank you very much to, to everyone in the town for what you're doing and for considering a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Uh, back to the, um, list that I have, uh, Ms. Khalil. All right, you may speak if you unmute yourself, Ms. Khalil. All right, you can proceed. Uh, Ms. Khalil, I can't hear you. Um, you appear to be unmuted, but Christian, have we got a technical problem here?
Yes, I'm, Ms. Khalil, if you are, um, saying anything, we're not able to hear you.
All right, if, uh, if you continually have a problem, you can call the technical assistance line. The number is at the bottom of the screen. But, um, I'm going to move on to Mrs. Donahue. Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Helen Donahue. I was there.
There you are. You're, you're still here.
Thank you. First of all, uh, Mr. Riley, thank you for the great job you did as the substitute moderator. Helen Donahue, District Six, I move the question.
Is there a second to moving the question? I don't have a second. Mrs. Langone has seconded it. All right, um, I'm, I've been reminded, uh, that we are past our normal ending time of 10:30, but we normally try to finish anything we've started before 10:30. This is the last matter we'll take up tonight. But let's now call for a vote on, uh, moving the question, uh, by Mrs. Donahue, seconded by Mrs. Langone. Uh, all hands to be lowered. All hands to be lowered. All right, now, we call for the yes votes on moving the question. Please, please raise your hand. I'm going to give it five more seconds. All right, that, call the vote at 102 attendees and two panelists, so 104 total. All right, all hands to be lowered, please. All right, all hands have been lowered. Now, those who are voting no on moving the question, please raise your hand. All right, I'm giving it five more seconds. All right, we have 20. All right, that has carried this time. We've moved the question. We now proceed to a vote on the motion under Article 16 to amend the zoning bylaw by inserting a new Section 9.9 Medical Services Overlay District. You've all been provided with the text of it. This requires a two-thirds vote. Um, well, all hands to be down. Actually, when do we do? Christian, are we doing a poll on this, please?
I was about to say, yes, we do have a poll produced.
We have a poll ready for this? All right, so on the poll, as a reminder, we're going to have, not have a show of hands, but we're going to have, uh, you to vote, um, on the motion. Yes, in favor of it and no, opposed. You click one or the other, or you may abstain, and then you submit. Click the submit button. All right, so that'll come up in just a moment.
Great. All right, so that poll should be in front of everybody now.
All right, so yes is in favor of the, uh, proposed Medical Services Overlay District. No is opposed to it. You may all vote, please. We're going to give that 10 more seconds. All right, the poll is closed. And we'll have the results in a moment. All right, the vote is 135 in favor, one opposed. It satisfies the two-thirds requirement in this carry. Now, um, we are at 10:30 plus. Uh, it's appropriate for me to accept a motion to adjourn. Um, Mr. Plasko, did you, uh, wish to speak to that?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn till Thursday evening at 6:30 with registration starting at 5:30.
All right, and, uh, there are probably, uh, a few, uh, Ms. Smith has, Jody Smith has seconded that. Um, on a show of hands, all those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand. On a show of hands, all those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand. Give that five more seconds. All right, I call it 119 in favor. And let's lower those hands and let's see who wants to continue. 119, yes. All right. When the no votes, when, all the votes have been, hands have been lowered, the no votes on adjourning. May we have that vote? And we'll give it 10 seconds. All right, we'll close the poll on that, please. I'm sorry, not the poll. We'll close the voting at two opposed. So we are adjourned till 6:30 on Thursday evening, February 11th. I want to remind everybody that the following meeting day normally would be Monday, but that is a legal holiday. So that if we don't finish on Thursday, we would have to go to the following Thursday. That's also school vacation week. So I wonder if people might keep that in mind when we get together this Thursday. Just a very subtle hint. Good night, everybody. Thank you for participating. Thank you for your patience as this is new to all of us and there are little kinks here and there that we're dealing with. After about 10 sessions, we could be pretty good at this. Good night.